Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of 5:30 in our time with the Electoral Board. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Anybody aware of Chuck? I know he's back in town, but okay. Didn't offer him a ride?
I was coming the other direction as we were on the phone.
Very good. Very much like duties for what the heck does this mean? But Janie, thank you for getting us on and ready to roll. And with that, I'll call in the city manager to introduce, or I'll ask, actually, I'm sorry, I'll ask Nancy to call her board to order and then we'll progress.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nancy Sullivan. I am the Chair of your Electoral Board for the City of Lexington. And with us is Vicki Turner, who's our Vice Chair, and Dorothy Blackwell is our Secretary. We also have Jane Floor, who's our Assistant Deputy Registrar. And of course, how many of y'all have met Jackie? I encourage anybody who is not to stop in her office. She is the most amazing General Registrar, Director of Elections, we have been blessed with. And after just having come back from Homestead with all of the General Electoral Board members, we're very, very fortunate to have her. They'd steal her in a heartbeat. So we are actually here to, actually, she is going to do all the speaking, I'm not. We're going to be talking to you about staffing requests and space allocation and relocation. And that will turn it over to Jackie Harris, our Director of Elections.
Welcome, Jackie.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. Nice to be here this evening. Mr. City Manager, thank you for having us here. I appreciate it. My name is Jackie Harris, and I'm the Director of Elections, General Registrar for the City of Lexington. Would you like to address information?
No, ma'am.
Okay, tonight, we're here just to kind of talk about our office and kind of how we've come to these requests that we've placed before you for additional staffing and space requirements. A little bit of backdrop, I started in elections in 1991 in the county of Alamooral. Eventually became the General Registrar of Alamooral County, moved on to become the General Registrar for the County of Fairfax. I've worked with a number of jurisdictions across the state, and I've had the opportunity to work in elections at the state, local, national, international levels. So I kind of bring a broad perspective to, you know, how I evaluate when we first come into an office and try to see what the needs may be. What I find is that, you know, we have a very nice office, you know, lovely environment, the people have been wonderful to work with. But we definitely have some shortcomings when it comes to meeting all of the requirements, especially in the environment in which we now operate. And I always tell people that elections are not the same as they were when I started in 1991. And they're certainly not the same environment that they were just five years ago. We are in a rapidly evolving situation where legislatively, just the environment in which elections operate. Everything's changed relatively dramatically over just the last several years. We've had hundreds of pieces of legislation introduced and passed. And we just have found that we've kind of grown exponentially in the requirements placed on us. And some of that's really good, you know, and some of it's very challenging. You know, the electorate is in general much more involved and interested in the day-to-day operations of our office, and we appreciate that. You know, we believe in transparency and working with the electorate, but it also puts challenges on the office. And one of the things that, when I'm talking about space and talking about staffing, these are the things that come to mind. First of all, is just general operations of the office. We do have a lot more responsibilities than we've had in the past. A lot of those are wrapped around security, cybersecurity. I know that the city manager is aware that we recently had to do a study that we have to perform annually. It's a 284-page security analysis of everything that touches the city and thereby touches the election space. This is a very in-depth thing. It's required to be filed with the Virginia Department of Elections annually. And it is hundreds upon hundreds of legal requirements for our security components, both physical and electronic. So that's, you know, just an example of something that's a very recent addition to what we do. You're probably familiar with some of the newer types of voting experiences that are now out there. And there's a few more on the horizon that you may not be aware of, but you're certainly probably aware that we do now have early voting. Early voting is just an expansion of what's been in place in Virginia for as long as I've been around, which is 45 days of absentee voting. But now that it's a no-excuse option, we have found that in general, and what we anticipate to continue, is that over 50% of the voters will cast their ballot prior to Election Day. And whether that's by mail or in person, each one of those ballots comes through our office, not through the phone location. So the shift of the responsibility falls on us. And there's a lot of, as you can understand, a lot of documentation and security that's wrapped around both of those processes. That being said, right now, our current staffing level is that I am the only full-time employee in the department. Jane, who was introduced earlier, is actually a part-time temporary employee who really is only budgeted currently for the hours that I'm on PTO and for the immediate 45 days surrounding an election. And there's no other staffing hours allocated to the department other than that. That really creates some issues as far as, you know, operational continuity. But also, you know, as we're looking forward, we want to make sure, and I kind of mentioned that, that continuity of operations is very important. If I'm to be hit by a bus, we want to make sure that the office continues to run seamlessly. And you may recognize that there was a bit of an interruption in the office operations recently when I came on board. And it really did, you know, create a bit of a push. When I came in on August 2nd, we were well into the period where we would be preparing for the next general election. And kind of came in behind the eight ball with no one trained to take care of the day-to-day operations of the office. Jane had not been assigned that role previously. So literally, there were zero staff in the office that could run any portion of the day-to-day operations. That was a crisis factor. And so we hit the ground running. We had a really great election, and I'm proud of that. But I do see that, really, to make sure that that's never an issue again, we need to make sure we can have that continuity of operation. To have staff members in place that can step up as needed, be trained appropriately. And the other thing is obviously succession planning. You know, I'm of an age, and we'd like to, I'd like to think that I will continue to serve in the role of a General Registrar for, you know, a period of time. But this is not something that someone can come in off the streets and immediately take on this job title. There is a lot of learning. The learning curve is long and it's very deep. So we really want to make sure that we have the opportunity to bring on someone of talent, get them trained, and have that sort of continuity that we can recruit and retain good personnel so that you have that long-term satisfaction that the elections are going to be run well. The same thing holds true with the space. You may be aware, we have 192 square feet in our office. So in that 192 square feet, we have both of our desks and around election time, something that we did today, we had to do the logic and accuracy testing on all of our voting equipment. That means pulling out all of the equipment, securing it in a way that it cannot be tampered with, and opening every piece, testing it in a public manner. So we take over another room for that. But even just bringing it into our office to prep it for that testing takes up every single solid surface in the office. Ends of desks, chair tops, every counter space there is, there's just no room left for anything else. So when a voter walks in, as we had today, we send them out to the hallway and say, well, there's a desk out there if you need to do something, and then come back in here if you can. It makes it very difficult to perform those types of duties. But there's also a legal requirement in the Code of Virginia that says that early voting takes place in the office of the General Registrar. Obviously, early voting with the hundreds of people that we had cast in early vote, I believe 800 or so in the last election, are not going to march to that 192 square feet and be able to cast the ballot securely and privately. So we have done our best to work within the ordinances and within the letter of the law that says it's in that the ordinance for the City of Lexington says that my office is at 300 East Washington Street. And the room that we use is 300 East Washington Street. I don't think that the spirit of law necessarily is meant in that when it says in the office of the General Registrar that we are necessarily capturing all of that. But we're meeting the letter of the law, and that's important, obviously. But I do think, really, to make sure that we're performing those duties as intended, that we really do have space within the space allocated for the General Registrar's office where the early voting is taking place. And so we've made the proposal that we move into the community room. And we've worked with the city and with Public Works to put forth a proposal for that and what that might look like. So, you know, those are some of the factors we have. I said, we've got some other things coming down the pike, and I just kind of wanted to alert you. Starting this year, we have to start registering 16-year-olds to vote, starting in October. We don't know how that's going to happen yet. We've not yet received a directive from the Virginia Department of Elections on how that will happen, but it will happen. It's the law. We will also start having same-day registration. That's something that other states do, meaning people can register up to and including Election Day. We don't know how that will look. We have yet to see how that will happen. We don't have directive on that yet. And we don't know if those will be provisional voters or how those voters will be treated differently than other voters. But these are things that are pending for this November general election. You know, we will start voting in September for that election. We do have this outstanding lawsuit. If you're familiar with Goldman v. Brink, it is the lawsuit brought by Mr. Goldman against the Virginia Department of Elections. And it went to the Fourth Circuit, who has remanded it back down to the lower court. Arguments are pending next week, but this is basically saying, should we need to reelect the entire 100-member House of Delegates this November? Will they be on the ballot? Meaning, there could potentially be a primary election sometime in this August or this September, in between the June primary and the November general election. Will we have to run a whole nother, fully-blown election? That has yet to be decided. So that's pending litigation. So we're monitoring a lot of things. I'm heavily involved in legislation, so I like to monitor what's happening in the legislative front. I spend a lot of time monitoring what's going through the General Assembly and our Privileges and Elections Committees. And so we had over 162 different pieces of legislation introduced to the P and E committees or, you know, Finance and Other, you know, cities and towns, et cetera, that ended up impacting elections. What passed in this particular iteration of the General Assembly was a much smaller number than that. But we really do have to kind of monitor what is pending at all times. That takes, you know, time. It takes attention. And I really think that the additional staffing and the additional space will help accommodate everything we need to do to make sure the city is well-served, that we have transparent, fair, efficient elections, and that the electorate is satisfied with our efforts and that we don't have any undue turmoil around the elections. We want to make sure that people are satisfied with the results. And I am open to any questions you may have. I'm sure the board is as well.
Wow. As is usual, regulatory oversight is challenging and ever-changing. And certainly with COVID and the early voting, it's a whole new dynamic of space and time and volunteers and the whole nine yards. So I'll say it later, but thank you for the work that you do and that your board puts in in making sure that we do have good, safe, appropriate elections. Members of council, what questions do you have? Leslie?
Did you say 16-year-olds can vote?
16-year-olds may register to vote. They will not be able to vote unless they are turning 18 by the next November general election. So they will preregister, but they won't become eligible voters until they're 17 with the date of their birthday being prior to or on Election Day.
Okay.
So would they, would they be able to vote in primaries?
A 17-year-old now can also vote in a primary as long as they'll be 18 before the intervening, you know, in that intervening election, they can vote if they'll be by the general election of age.
And just to be clear, it's that 16-year-olds are eligible to register to vote. It's not that you have to register them to vote. Seek them out and make sure that all 16-year-olds are registered.
Correct. I imagine, and this is speculation, I imagine it will be done mostly through the Division Motor Vehicles, like most voter registration is now. And we would probably partner with local high schools and other, you know, special population groups to make sure that we're, you know, making people aware of this. But also, please don't show up when you're 16 at the polls because you'll get turned away. And we don't want to give people, you know, bad first experience with voting.
Exactly. It's a matter of process. We don't have queues on these, so we'll have to work not to speak over one another. And there's nothing to push, except for if you push in the center, it does silence your mic. Turns, it silences your mic.
Is this all?
Yours is on.
Okay, for now.
For now. No.
If I don't touch it.
If you don't touch it, that's exactly right. So be careful what you mumble.
Okay, because we're always on.
Exactly.
All right, in there. So take a note in there. We have, my last recollection of the number of registered voters in the city was approximately 4,000. Is that number still good?
About 41, closer to 42 now, but, you know, in that range, yes. We will be doing some list maintenance coming up. I imagine once we perform list maintenance in July, we'll see a drop like we typically do when we perform those processes.
So 4,000, 4,100, 4,200, working up in there. The registration, did Virginia move forward in online registrations?
Yes, you can register to vote online.
In there, in addition to doing a DMV and whatnot, and then outreach to the schools whenever that is convenient in there to do that. So very good. So look forward. In our last election, we had, you had mentioned 50% of the people who voted, voted prior to the election and whatnot. And we had fairly good turnout, but nowhere near the turnout that we have when we have a presidential election. That generally is the highest turnout. And so anyway, maybe, maybe we'll have higher numbers coming up in there to do it. So it's always good. So possibly we'll have a big election here coming up. Who knows? You had mentioned PTO. I don't know what PTO means.
It is paid time off. It is a combination of what would be called sick leave and vacation leave. It's usually clumped together and just to have paid time off category. Yeah, it's a HR term, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just not up on the letters. I went to a school board meeting one time, and I was really not up on the terminology in there. And so, and so it's important to keep the office going. And I know what you mean when you talk about the sparseness of the space in there to do it. So I assume you flowed over into that community room for much of the work that needs more space.
We do as needed. You know, Janie's fabulous. You know, we're constantly contacting her, saying, can we take it over for this function or for this other function? For this upcoming election, we intend to bring some of our operations into that space, whether it's, you know, formally designated as our office or not. It just allows us to manage the election more closely as intended. So we're, we'll move in and move out. It still requires us, though, because it's not a secure place to store election equipment, that what we do is every morning we come in prior to, you know, opening. We take all the voting equipment, we roll it down the hallway outside and back inside. And then at the end of Election Day, we roll it back outside into whatever elements that means, and back inside and lock it up in our office and then perform the early morning and after-work required daily, you know, treatment of the equipment and the books as well.
So every night, it's under lock and key?
It is.
Yeah. And there you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Smith? Two things. Under what grounds is the litigation base that may require a full-scale election again this fall? I recall reading about it, but I recall the details.
The Constitution of Virginia requires that the first election of the General Assembly following the release of the census data be done using those census maps and because of the delay of the bipartisan commission, yeah.
Okay. The second one is, I appreciate all your efforts for making our elections safe and secure and efficient and everything you mentioned. Has anyone mentioned the letter of the law that requires the election to be in the office and during the voting process? Is somebody will technically, I guess you could argue the technicality on either side, but I'm curious if anyone had brought it up.
Not locally, no. We are not the only jurisdiction that faces that type of a challenge. And so I actually checked in with others that I know are following a similar, you know, tactic to try to make sure that we're meeting the letter of the law, just to make sure that we had our faces covered. And no, I've not had a direct comment from anyone in Lexington.
Thank you.
Not necessarily inviting people to make comments. Jackie, a couple of things. Certainly, one of the things that I had learned early in my career is there are blue rules and red laws, and we certainly want to comply with the law. Things, working within rules can be bent a little bit to make sure it's under the same roof, we're accomplishing the intended piece. But I guess, as we move forward and understand how much of this is law versus best practices. Because given our size and circumstances currently with the drastic change of need of space and time, I mean, 45 days, that's the number of days open. You've got the weekends in there, so it's a long period of time that you're occupying additional space. Because I'm thinking that there could be some alternatives that we could utilize. They come to mind, I'm not going to spew any right now, but there's some arrangements that could be made. There's a lock and key that you could have all the equipment set up and lock it, lock it in from that standpoint. So I would just go through looking at other alternatives from that standpoint and definitely follow the letter of the law. But if we can work with the rules, would be great. Are there any exemptions for size of voting municipalities, or is it one-size-fits-all?
In that section of the code, it is one-size-fits-all. And that is a code requirement that in the office of the General Registrar is from the Code of Virginia.
Okay. And then your analogy, if you get hit by a bus, you know, continuity. I feel like we have other arrangements for succession planning like that. And frequently, also with law enforcement, there are MOUs with neighboring municipalities. So the city of Lexington, if they're going to mosey into the county or the county is here, Buena Vista, just knowing the rules of engagement so we can support one another most appropriately. I don't know if that's an option, because I don't know your world, but if there is any opportunity to explore of doing MOU with either Buena Vista or Rockbridge Counties Registrar, I think that could be a positive option to look at as well.
And thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I am all for creative solutions. I can point to when what people like to call motor voter first passed. It passed in 1993. Virginia adopted it in 1996. It really got kind of underway around the year 2000. They were building a Division Motor Vehicles in the city of Charlottesville, and I happened to be the Director of Elections in Alamooral County then. They built an office onto that building, and we moved our entire operations into the Division Motor Vehicles because that was the number-one place where people were registering, and they were doing it wrong incessantly. So we, you know, we took advantage of an opportunity to address an issue in the most creative way, but meeting the needs of the electorate. So absolutely open to all sorts of creative solutions. One thing I can say is that, you know, we suffer that every, obviously, every jurisdiction is in their peak business at exactly the same time. So when we are underwater, so are they all.
Right.
And there is kind of a known and understood shortage of officers of election and trained election administrators. The current understanding is about 20 to 25% of election administrators in the United States plan to leave their office within, before the next presidential election. And that's broadly quoted with a number of studies backing it up. That being said, you brought forth the concept of the presidential election. I'd just like to point out that in 2024, we anticipate a presidential primary. That happens in March. Back that up 45 days for when early voting actually begins. We will then have a June primary because only the presidential race is on that March primary. We would go directly into a June primary, and then we would move into the November general election. Obviously, as you pointed out, the busiest of the four-year cycle. So in 2024, we will occupy that space no matter what, pretty much the entire year, under any circumstances, unless we're elsewhere. You know, unless there's a, you know, creative alternative to being in that space.
And a point of clarification, Mr. Alligood mentioned you can register to vote online or at the DMV, but ultimately, that comes back to you to verify.
Yes.
So it's, if people do that path, it still has to go through your office. I think it's an important understanding. And I don't know if there's any space by the new DMV or if there's any wisdom to you being by the DMV these days. But that's a smart idea, if they have room there that we could collaborate or coordinate. I hadn't thought of that, but.
Forefronts are a very popular choice for open space, you know, if you have local business owners who, you know, want to rent to a nonprofit organization like this city government.
Checks are usually good.
Yes.
Question. I know that some of the expenses are reimbursed by the state. Not exactly sure on which ones. Are they just personnel or is it just?
Not exactly sure on, on which ones are they just personnel or is it just a percentage of your salary? Or is it a percentage of all of the operations?
At this point in time, the state reimburses in the current budget, one hundred percent of my salary and one hundred percent of the electoral board salary. That is not always the case. It's subject to the appropriations act. So the budget bill will say that they fund it, but they fund it to the degree that they fund it within the appropriations act. So we watch that, you know, that budget bill every year to see to what degree you're actually being reimbursed. They have recently reimbursed us for the cost of the prepaid postage on absentee ballots. Um, but I don't know that that will continue. That was, I think, a COVID era, you know, reimbursement. And I imagine that will drop off. Generally speaking, the state does not fully fund elections. It's just a mandate.
So, so the, a, a deputy would not be fully funded or partially funded by the state. And also, uh, your space needs are not, you know, there's no formula of reimbursement for the square footage that you might inhabit, you know, inhabit within City Hall or somewhere else. I'm just trying to, you know, cause sometimes there are the formulas where there's some way money that comes to, uh, would come to Lexington. Because yes, you might utilize a hundred ninety-two square feet within a ten thousand square foot building. And, and there's be a formula, but just clarifying that there's nothing there. There's no, uh, compensation or, or rent that's helped paid for by the state. If you were to expand or need a, need a better location.
At this point, no. Um, you know, there are, we're always kind of keeping our eyes open into what grant funding might be out there. We realize that certain jurisdictions, depending on the nature of the grants, and we look through, you know, what's coming directly through the state. Um, that's kind of approved grant, not third party, uh, what may be perceived as partisan grant, um, money coming in. But there are opportunities, but we're not under the comp board, you know, similar to the treasures and the shares and pressures of revenue. And they do have kind of a, a staffing ratio and a portion of those are covered as well. So their operating expenses. Right now, the code of Virginia just says that the locality is responsible for the expenses of our office.
Okay. And, and kind of to that point even, like the mayor mentioned where the DMV is located, it's located in the county. So would that be legal for our registrar to be located outside of our jurisdiction? It would be legal?
Yes.
Okay. So just, just thought I would ask, you know, if our city residents were leaving the city to vote, if that was legal. So, so they have, you have to vote in your office, but your office can be located anywhere.
Pretty much. You know, there's, there's usually a, a circle around, you know, they, they like to be within a mile or so. But it's not unheard of. It's, it's happening now within the state.
That works. That works. I'm just clarifying again, the letter of the law, that, that.
That's good bargain.
It does have good parking. Um, what, what your space needs be? Because again, you, you say a hundred ninety-two square feet. I mean, what, what do you envision that you truly need a, a room this large? I mean, when I voted early, I think, you know, I was the only one there and I think I encountered seven officers of the elections. You know, at lunchtime on a random Tuesday, early, you know, uh, and there were seven different employees to make sure that I voted correctly. And it, we, and we were using a lot of space because two people met me outside. Two people were in the office, then I leave and I go, and there was four or five more people in the community meeting room. You know, you, you kind of cycled through. So what would be the best space that, that you would need?
I would, that's, that's a fabulous question. Thank you. To address what you experienced, in my professional opinion, with my background, I would say that, that system of election management does not meet the letter of the law. And that, that bringing people to point A and point B really is not, you know, an ideal situation. So I think the space that we're looking at with the design plan in place so that that community room really is kind of exactly what I would anticipate would be a, a fair square footage approach that would allow both the operations of the office and allow for secure storage onsite of the voting equipment that we needed to use on a daily basis. We could still use, you know, some other secured storage for pieces that, that can be, you know, utilized on election day. And then also provide adequate space for voters to come and cast a, a vote. And, and be able to do so privately, independently, et cetera. One thing I didn't mention about our office and, and one of the things that bothers me about the space we have right now is that there's no, where you can stand in that office where you cannot see our screens. And our screens almost always have personally identifying information on it. We cannot have those visible to the public. So it, it becomes a, a real critical, you know, kind of how do we arrange computers even in such a way that, that a voter can't just walk in or anyone off the street and potentially send someone else's social security number, their full year of birth and other things that are not part of the public record. So the design elements we have in place does allow us to have, you know, counter facing spaces that the voters are separated from our workspace.
Would you vacate your office that you currently utilize if you took over then the community meeting room?
Yes.
So, so I mean, the city would get a little bit of square footage back for additional use if the community meeting room was, was utilized.
Jackie might suggest that, uh, City Hall would capture a closet back. You don't have to say it. I'll say it for you.
Yeah, I, I, I think you were being very charitable in beginning when you described your work environment as lovely and, 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 you know, a, a, a good environment because that is a very small office. And clearly you need more space than that. And even if we only have forty-one hundred registered voters in Lexington, a lot of what you do is irrespective of how many registered voters we have, you still have to have the voting machines. You still have to have your workspace. And so I, I certainly sympathize with your need to have a better workspace than you currently have. Um, I'm wondering though, if it's feasible. To take over the community room. So I, I would love to hear from Jim as to whether we've given some thought to whether that's possible.
Uh, thank you. Yes. Am I on?
Yes.
Uh, yes, we have. We've worked with Jackie and, uh, Public Works to see how we could make any modifications that would be helpful. Um, my plan right now, working with Jackie is to basically, uh, use that space for her sole use for the majority of the year. We would not have any community use of that room. We might be able to modify that a little bit from time to time, but for the most part, uh, you know, she would occupy that room and her equipment to the extent that she feels it's comfortable there, would use that room. You also, I hope recall that, that position she has requested is in the budget. So the changes and modifications of that room, they're minor, are accounted for financially. And the staffing that she's requesting is in the budget. So I do support what she's been requesting.
If, if we were to do this, when would we make that move? Prior to the?
I've not had that conversation with Jackie, but we can have that. Eminently, especially it, once the budget's approved and we know that we can move in that direction.
Right. It seems like in today's political climate that, that, that registrar's offices have become very politicized. And a lot of scrutiny is directed at, at these offices. And we've had a couple of situations where materials were, had to be in the hallway because there was no space for them in your office. And I feel like we need to do something because if we don't, that, that's likely to happen again. And, and obviously we want to avoid that. So.
Thank you, Jackie, for all that you're doing for our citizens here in Lexington. And your depth of knowledge is just comforting, um, for, for all of us. But the question that I had, you had mentioned having to move the voting machines out of there and roll them outside and back into the building to your office. Um, is that because of other uses of the community room? Or is that because you don't feel that room is secure? And what do we need to do to secure it?
I, we do that now because I don't feel that storage of the equipment right now. Because you can see into that room through a number of windows and there's not any sort of, you know, way to obscure the equipment. Um, I just think it becomes too tempting to someone who might, you know, have mischief in mind to have voting equipment. Or even just the perception that the voting equipment is somehow unattended or easily accessible. So we're, we're very conscious of, you know, appearances. Um, and so we do move it primarily so that we can lock it into another space a little more securely. In the, the design plan, there is a design that actually builds a structure within that room that has locks on it. And it would be to the ceiling and it would obscure the equipment and put it behind yet another set of locks.
So having somewhat of an exterior door there for the, in that, to that room. Does that pose any extra problem?
I don't believe so. And when we spoke with Public Works, we talked about ways to secure that first exterior door. And then you come into that small vestibule and there's another door that enters into that room. So we've talked about adding the same type of security that's on the other back entrance to the building. So that we could, you know, you know, use a swipe to get in, um, a little more security on that.
Has, has there been any consideration to using the second floor conference room? I mean, there's an elevator that goes to the second floor since the community room is used so much by the community. Um, and the conference room might not lend itself to being used by the community after hours and so on. And, and just wondering if, if the conference room is used more than an hour or two hours a day currently. And if that would be, it's a larger room. It's a little bit longer, but it's a larger room than, than the community meeting room.
We've not done a, a design assessment on that room. Um, just, I'm familiar with it. And I'm, we probably could try to see if that would be feasible. I think that, that, because it's a long, narrow kind of shotgun, you know, space. I think it would be hard to create the, you know, the, the separation of the operations from the voting space. But I do like the fact that there's an ingress, egress, you know, kind of loop there, which is obviously ideal.
It's just, it's just a massive room. And, and it would allow the community meeting room to still be used as City Hall's conference room, if you will, during the workday. And then a lot of members of the community could still use the community meeting room for their numerous meetings that occur there now. Again, purely thinking, the conference room is upstairs. It, it's nice. It's second floor.
Does it remain handicapped accessible in the event of a power outage? Is that on a grid?
I don't know that.
I mean, that's one of our, obviously, one of the things that we really have to adhere to very closely is the accessibility. ADA is a key component of what we have to do. And I, I, that's the type of a.
Sure, absolutely. Where's the voters registrar office in this room? So has there been any consideration? Are they bursting at the seams also? So I, I assume those conversations have taken place that if they are asking their locality for additional room. And you're asking your locality for additional room if, that you all have talked about what might be best for all the voters in Lexington and Rockbridge County?
We've broached the topic. We do know that they have also been, um, looking at additional space and maybe offsite space, uh, perhaps. And, um, that right now, you know, budgetary concerns are, are kind of at the forefront. And they have to look at what is within that. Um, I would be open to shared space if we could accommodate that appropriately. You know, and you really have to look at the electorate and see how you can educate and, and manage that flow of traffic. But there are all kinds of creative solutions around the state, so we're open to it.
And there, and there's only one DMV.
Correct.
For now.
In our community, but, um, obviously, um, we also have the City Hall scheduled for renovation in the not too distant future. So that this allows us to think about space that you need and space configuration at City Hall. If we want to continue that, uh, venue for the registrar's office. Or if there's some other, uh, creative alternative that would better suit staff as well as our citizens. So I'm gonna pull the plug on it, uh, for, uh, brainstorming, but, um, great questions. And again, thank you. Yes, your experience and level of competency in dealing with all this and, uh, your calm demeanor is greatly appreciated. It's, uh, uh, nice to know that you're at the helm and, uh, with the team that sits behind you, uh, keeping things going. At the, uh, elections are a stressful time. I can remember, um, being the, um, not on site, but the, I can't remember the terminology, but the, um, electoral official responsible for the, um, write-in votes. And it was such a great treat because it was usually about twenty votes that we had to count at the end of the night. And boy, how those rules, roles have changed, uh, by probably at least fifty plus percent, uh, voting early at this point. So learning, learning how to pivot.
And thank you. And I'll just reiterate, when I said things were lovely, I, I'm referring primarily to everyone in the building. The, the people have been most helpful and welcoming. And I think that, you know, from a staff perspective, everything has been just a wonderful experience. I appreciate meeting all of you. I hope to get a chance to, to know you better. And I can't say enough about our board and Jane, who has been a rock throughout this. And she really stepped up when, you know, she really didn't need to. And so, um, I appreciate all the support I've gotten since I've arrived here.
Thank you very much. Electoral Board, thanks for your service. Thanks for. Absolutely. Directly impacted on election day, without a doubt. We will. Close the joint meeting with the electoral board and move directly, I'll call the mean to order for our, uh, work session regarding finance as Jen settles in. And I'll also just encourage council members, be sure to have your microphone close. It's important for folks in the audience to be able to hear you. And I guess Ed Smith took off. Ryan, is that you? Welcome. Glad you're here. Did you want to speak tonight or are you just listening? Okay. Did you good deed for the day? Good job.
Mr. Mayor, we're first gonna work into, uh, dealing with some of the questions that, uh, council members had last, uh, last week at the budget work session.
Jen, pull that microphone closer to you.
Closer. That's all I can get it. Okay. We will deal with, as I said, some of the questions that, uh, council had at our last work session. And Jennifer, the finance director, will start working through those questions and some corrections that we made. And, uh, of course, uh, pipe up anytime you have questions now based on what you're hearing.
Okay. So starting out, I think, um, a question when we were in the revenue section for the new construction in the city that would add to the real estate taxes. The FY twenty-two new construction assessments totaled two million, four hundred seventy thousand, five hundred. So that is new, uh, real estate that can be taxed. And so far in the new construction assessments for FY twenty-three, which is based solely on building permit amounts, is two point one million dollars.
What, what page are you on? Would you, you're reading over a page? What page? Is it one of these pages you handed to us?
Not a page I gave you. I'm sorry. I just had a list of follow-ups from last time. Um, another question was checking with Rockbridge County to see what they had budgeted for their revenue sharing projection. And they were ahead of ours at two point two five million. So you'll see in the new pages I passed out tonight that we adjusted our revenue projection up slightly as well.
To that same figure?
No, we still kept it lower than that figure.
Thank you.
Um, and then Chuck, you had asked me about the revenue line item miscellaneous fees for Public Works. And in digging into that, it's, um, incredibly miscellaneous. So included in there for this year so far were things such as, um, a curb cut for a citizen. KFC needed a new dumpster and WNL needed de-icer.
What was the last one?
De-icer during one of the snowstorms. Um, on page.
Quick, I'm sorry, quick question. So Public Works is supplying WNL de-icer.
We did during one of the snowstorms in January this year.
Okay.
I don't know that that's a, a recurring expense.
Is that a regular practice?
Um, I'll, I can confirm on that.
Just a one-off, like we're out, we need some, can you help us out?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Um, so on, on page ten of the budget, still in the revenue section, I was asked for clarification about the five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar revenue line item. It was contributions general. And that is nearly all contributions from WNL. They make both a payment in lieu of taxes and a donation to the city. So for the FY twenty-three budget, I'll split that out so that WNL has their contribution line. And then we still have contributions general for any other miscellaneous item that might come in. Sorry. Okay, so then on, on page 16, there were questions on lines 5651 and 5652. Those were the funds that we are recommending be sent to Fair and Limekiln. And I did double check with the grant administrator today. And it is possible that we could potentially swap out the recipient of the funds if necessary. But they need to know that in advance and would have to approve it. So it couldn't just be a, a real quick swap if it turns out that one or both of those organizations, organizations are not able to take on the project.
I was gonna say, do y'all have any ideas for folks to be, Fair did not apply.
Again, since Fair did not apply, and it's well known in the community that they don't really exist anymore. I think that it might be good to reach out to the former director of Fair and, and to say, hey, or, you know, what would these funds be used for?
I, I'd rather see us find a functioning entity and have them apply. For instance, a dance company or the choral society, I'm not sure. That, that's what I'm asking, is anybody that you can think of? Do you have any, anybody that would qualify as the arts that could benefit?
I, I'm certainly aware of lots of arts organizations in, in the city and, and that, that could benefit. And I'm happy to share them, but, but again, I just, the fact that these funds were not requested by an entity and we just put it in the budget, I just want to be sure that we're, we're right to be doing that.
As the mayor said, if you have another suggestion, we're very happy to transfer those or reprogram those funds. But we do have to do it now. So if you have something, somebody in mind, just let us know. We can run that up the, up the ladder to Richmond. And it sounded like that was doable today. Two months from now, it will not be.
What, what would be the deadline to make that change with, with the state?
June is when the award, I believe. So we're talking, you know, six months, maybe.
Was Fair somewhat the clearinghouse of these funds for several different organizations or did it?
Historically, we split the funds between, going back over probably the last 15 plus years. We applied for this grant because it's 100% match. So it, and it's money that's going out from the state, so why not come to Lexington? We can debate that, that, that's step number one, because I think that's a concern you have. Is if we have $4,000 in the budget, we should take care of the poor folk in our community, not the arts people. So that's, that's one question that I've heard. The second is, as we've done this historically, we generally applied. When Limekiln went out of business, Fair got the full brunt of it when we applied, delivered it to them. And they used it for their operations and productions and things that they used to do. It appears they no longer exist and it was almost a perfunctory request, just a letter saying, we'll take the money if you get it. Our position, the city's position has historically been, if there aren't, aren't state dollars coming to the community, we're not doing anything.
No, I understand all that. But my question is, my understanding was Fair, it wasn't just for that summer Fair program, but some of the dance groups and the choral society, I thought they were all part of Fair and maybe benefiting from these funds. So in some way, if that is the case, maybe we do still call it Fair, but it can go to the organizations that are existing. But I don't know enough about, about what Fair status is to say that's right or wrong.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure either. I perceive that Fair no longer exists. And, and they're not continuing and they're not investing in those other organizations anymore. So currently, we could redirect the, that contribution to another art associated or encourage another organization to apply.
I wonder if they would consider an organization be our schools when our students start being assigned instruments and parents have to pay for them. That, that those funds could be used for purchasing of instruments for our students so that, that expense is not a burden to parents who can afford it and then their parents who cannot, so that child is not participating in the band.
We can ask the question, of course. I would still like to have some suggestions in case that falls through, but easy enough to ask, we can find out.
Okay, thank you.
And purchase of band instruments could be rental band instruments.
Or ransom.
That's happened too, in there.
Again, I feel like we could easily ask Fair, do you exist? If you don't exist, who did you formally support? And according to their website, they supported the Rockbridge Symphony, the Rockbridge Ballet, Hailstone Dance Studio, the Rockbridge Area Youth Strings, Discovery Heights Museum, which I'm not sure that, their status right now. And then they also have an instrument loan program that they had been doing through Fair, where they loaned out some drums and some other items. But I feel like it'd be a good place to start, that the Symphony and the Youth Strings, Hailstone and Rockbridge Ballet all have a big presence in this community and are nonprofits and serve a lot of people, a lot of adults and kids. And those would be some organizations that could benefit from these dollars and benefit the city.
Do you feel like you need any further direction?
Yes.
See, see if Fair is alive and if they're not.
Well, I've heard some conversation about perhaps operationally, there has been difficulties at Fair. So if I call somebody up and they say, sure, what does that mean? Are they alive or are they, are they getting the funds to an organization? I've heard some questions of that nature. So it appears to me that we should probably go directly to an organization and I don't have a, you know, dog in the fight.
I think it's appropriate, if Fair says, yes, we are still functioning, which you've heard is not accurate, that we would require or request financial information of, of the organization, what they've taken in and how they've spent it, to make sure that it's, this would be earmarked and, and have the requirement, this would be earmarked. So if we delivered it to them in years past, ensure that it ended up in the destination. They certainly should have the books to reflect that. So I, I understand your concern. We've been talking that they don't exist. Maybe we should call them, hypothesizing, but.
I'll ask for that information.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
So what, what Mr. Ziegler had mentioned, the Rockbridge Symphony and several other organizations, do they operate under the aegis of anything or are they all separate now? And if, if they were under Fair, then that would be kind of the umbrella for them, not necessarily the right word. But if Fair doesn't exist, do they have an umbrella otherwise? I don't know.
I can't speak for all four of those organizations, but again, they're all very public in our, in our city. I'm sure we can find out. And again, the Executive Director of Fair or the former Executive Director of Fair, I mean, we know where he works, we could easily ask him the, the status. And I think then we'd be, then we'd be set. Then, then we'd have a good path forward.
And be a good use of that money.
The next follow-up question was in regard to the water meter replacement, the 100,000 that we have budgeted. So I was able to confirm with Public Works that at the current time, there are 118 water meters that need replacing. And the cost to replace those ranges from $870 to $2,637, depending on the size. And he did confirm though, that the bulk of the ones that need replacing now are that smallest size at the $870. The status of the recycling truck that was purchased a few years ago, the interim Director of Public Works is going to put out a bid advertisement to sell that truck. It had been on consignment, but it hadn't gotten any bites. Moving on to Jordan's Point Park, it was noted that that was left off of the CIP. So I did re-add that. Right now, I don't have any funds programmed in the next five years for that line. I'm still working with the, the head at Public Works to determine how much, if anything, will be spent of the 53,000 that was sort of earmarked for Jordan's Point Park this year, if we'll get any of that in. And if not, it'll be a request for a carryover into FY23.
With regard to the truck, we, I had mentioned at our previous meeting, that MSA is looking to buy a truck. And that perhaps this might be the truck that they're looking to buy in there to do that. So, so has there been any message to MSA? I haven't talked to them, but I'll be glad to talk to them about the truck.
No, we've not spoken with them.
All right, all right. So, so we need to move ahead on that in there. So MSA meeting is gonna occur the first week of May.
Sure. But the truck is on consignment?
It, it no longer is.
It no longer is.
And you're just advertising it for sale now? Is that, we understood what you said?
Right, for sealed bids.
Sealed bid, all right.
Actually, it was a dollar figure discussed with the supplier.
A minimum bid?
Well, an actual dollar offer was made for the truck, but we have to buy our policy, take bids. So we had a, we had a sizable or reasonable offer, but an offer doesn't allow us to sell it unless we take bids.
That was the last of my follow-up questions. So if nobody minds, I can move into the changes that are in the, the pages that I've handed out to you tonight.
Can I ask you one question and stop me if it's in the pages? But for the school, the construction funds that we're gonna transfer, we're leaving those in still or what's the status of that?
As of the drafts in front of you tonight, yes, that's still in there. Okay, so starting with the first packet of paper clipped papers, that is the updated transmittal letter, which really just has all of the corresponding numbers updated based on the changes within the budget.
Let me stop you. The one you just handed us or the?
I'm sorry, the one from the very beginning. Yes, the one Mary went to.
Okay.
Then this package that just went around is the updated CIP for both the general fund and the utility fund. The changes in the general fund include adding a, two lines for the Rockbridge Regional Jail request. And we also, after the discussion in the work session last week, I have halved the line item for the City Hall renovation study. That is now 52,500. And the other half, 52,500, has been allocated to the City Managers Department as contingency. And you can see that line item on page 34 in your budget books.
You'll remember, we had 100 and so, instead of ending up like we did with Jordan's Point, with a bid for what we had budgeted. We'll see what people bid.
In the utility fund CIP, the only change that was made was bringing forward the WNL Master Meter MOU into FY23. Yes, and that's the 500,000 that we had discussed. And. Okay. Moving on now to the group that I just handed out. Starting here with the general fund, significant changes. Changes within this packet are in the registrar's budget on page 42. I added in $25,545. This is the quote from Public Works to move their office space plus additional ancillary non-construction needs. On page 33 in that same packet, I added $10,000 to City Council's budget under lease rent of buildings. And that is the estimated cost for the city to use this boardroom for the year. On page 85, I adjusted the Health Department Agency's request. They increased it by $3,088 after they had given us, given us a heads up that they used an old formula. On pages 86 and 75, I adjusted the agency requests for the indoor pool, back to the 15,000 that Forest Swimming had requested. And I've increased the budgeted amount for the outdoor pool to the 20,000. Those are the two I had mixed up earlier. No changes were made to the school board or the equipment replacement fund whatsoever. So I have a couple more handouts. In the agency request recommendations, I noticed that the, the 5,000 and 4,000 that we had recommended for Fair Limekiln was not added in there. So it's in the new page coming around to you now. And this next sheet is the utility fund projections that projects us out to FY32. And I did hand this out at the last work session, but we didn't really get into it. So I highlighted a couple lines I'd like to, to review just because we are talking about using potentially up to $5.5 million of ARPA funding to take care of projects in the utility fund. We thought it might be important for you to see why we're making that recommendation. So when you, when you receive your page, if you want to look at the three lines I highlighted in light blue, you'll see at the end of FY22, we're expecting operating income less debt service of just over $1 million. Then once we take care of the CIP and other project costs we're expecting this year, we're expecting a change in cash of, a loss, a reduction of $259,000 or leaving us with cash at the end of the year in the utility fund of just over 4.5 million. Moving forward to FY23, we are recommending using 500,000 of the ARPA funds to take care of that WNL project that we're moving forward. And that would leave us with 4.6 million at the end of FY23. And then you'll see where we start to look at some big dollar changes. FY24 and FY25 is when we're looking to implement the Jackson area Phase 1A and Phase 1B. So if, for example, in FY24, we did not allocate ARPA funding of $5 million, we would finish the, with cash at the end of the year. Obviously, we wouldn't have negative cash, but we just wouldn't do the project. Because at this time, the utility fund doesn't really have the capacity to take on more debt. Any questions?
Just affirming what I think I heard you say is that in 2024, we will look to do, use 5 million of the ARPA funds to begin the Jackson area project.
Correct, yes. The last handout I have for you today is.
On reflection, as we had that discussion last week, it also seemed prudent to go ahead and schedule or program these ARPA funds today. We have to allocate them by the end of calendar year of '24. Sounds like a long time from now, but it's a year and a half. We know we've got these projects out there. Let's go ahead and use them today or allocate these big funds today for some of these larger projects. And from an accountability standpoint, it's much easier today to go ahead and allocate those and spend them for these larger projects than try and push something through a year and a half from now with maybe some smaller projects. Accounting for those and having the federal government review those types of reports will be much more difficult than dealing with a big project today. So that's why we sort of said, let's reprogram, let's think that over and not call it general fund. So that's why we sort of said, let's reprogram, let's think that over and not call it general fund. Let's just call it ARPA funding. Use those dollars.
So this last handout is just sort of a roadmap of what we're recommending for use of the ARPA funds. As you'll see at the top, our total allocation for the city is just over nine point one million dollars. We've received half so far. And today, before I left the office, I actually received an email confirming that the second half will be available in June and will receive notification of that probably thirty days in advance of the funding. So far, out of the funds that we have received, the four point five million, you have voted to allocate two point three million dollars of that to the capital improvements, or I'm sorry, the capital projects fund, with two million being specifically designated for bridge repairs. And then the remaining three hundred and eighty seven thousand has just not been appropriated yet.
Right, it's my understanding too that that bridge is one bridge.
That's correct, yes.
Conceptually, it's one bridge. If we were to receive funding for that bridge, because revenue sharing, we have a grant in for that that we should know about this month, then we could reprogram that for other bridges. You know, that is the one that's in most need now. It's a priority. But again, we have that revenue sharing request in. Potentially, we could receive some funding for that. The downside is we wouldn't see it until about twenty twenty seven. So then we're still waiting four years before we make any repairs. But we'll wait and see if that money actually comes across.
Probably wouldn't see it, but we'd know about it.
Correct.
Then, moving on down the sheet, we are recommending, as previously discussed, I'm actually going to skip skip ahead first and talk about the five million, the the five million dollars that we just went through in the utility fund. And then also the five hundred thousand just beneath that that we spoke about in the utility fund for the W and L project. And then, as the city manager mentioned in our work session last week, he is recommending continuing on with the AM lining project and putting a million dollars of the ARPA funds toward, excuse me, toward that project.
That'll be for consideration this evening.
Right.
And if I could note, when I wrote the recommendation and in our discussion, I mentioned taking it from general fund balance. But again, upon reflection, let's go ahead and use that ARPA money today that leaves us with the same amount of dollars, that million dollars in the other pocket called general fund. And you can also see that if you look at what's left at the end of these allocations, potential allocations are two hundred eighty three thousand dollars. Having that unallocated, if you will, and with that extra million dollars that we will not use from general fund balance, if we find we do not receive the money from the state for that school construction, that can pay for, should we choose to, that can pay for that requirement for that school funding for the county. That one point two million is approximately what we need. That's estimated. Just conceptually, looking down the road, how do we find it? Where is it? It's there still.
That's predicated on not getting the one point two from the state. But we're talking on the revenue side of things. Is there? I think it's the the Build Back America or the latest one point nine trillion that's been appropriated. Do we expect additional dollars from that?
Nothing has been allocated directly. There's two phases to that. One goes directly to the states, and then the states can allocate it through some of their existing programs and funding streams. And then there are grants that go to localities. There's been no guidance received on either of those from Washington. You know, we have no idea when it's coming or how it's coming or how to apply. It will come, but.
Once a bureaucracy is put in place to slow it down and consume part of the spending. Cynically said. I recall Mark Merrill, when we met, our CBT, Community Transportation CTV, Community Transportation Board member, suggested that there should be additional funds out there, as did Randy Kaiser, for potential bridge projects.
I mean, I think our best bet will be in that critical infrastructure, bridges being one. Potentially utilities, water and sewer, there may be some funding there. From what I've heard, of course, and I think it's rightfully so to do it, it'll go to those communities with the most critical need. You know, it's hard for the federal government or the state to say, let's give it to somebody whose plant or facilities are, you know, at eighty percent of capacity or operating stance. And some others are at sixty percent, and they cannot afford to make those improvements. Well, where should you invest? You invest where it's most needed. Whether that means we're above or below any conceptual cutoff line, I don't know yet, but we'll wait and see what's available and we'll apply for what what's possible.
Questions from council?
I'm still thinking about that huge hit that is coming from MSA. Don't know when it's going to come, but I know it's coming. And is there any possibility of some of this money being allocated for for that purpose for paying the city share of MSA cost?
Of course, that's a possibility. Frankly, I would not recommend it for any number of reasons. One is there are grant funds out there. So let's work as hard as we can to get those grant funds for things like critical plant improvements. Far less likely to get funding for something like pipes in the ground. It's just less likely to happen. Plus, we all know we've got current inefficiencies in our underground because we're losing water, we're treating wastewater that isn't there, that's rainwater. We're dealing with water and sewer line breaks that put us in a stance of having to go and tear up people's front yards and roadways on a regular basis. And if we're able to put some of that underground, sort of speak a rest, some of that problem to rest, if you will, we save money for years when we're not repairing that pipes under the ground. So those are those are savings in hand where I think we should probably take the money we have today. I recommend that invest those areas because, as Jen said, you know, five years from now, when we still have bad pipes, it's going to be tough to find the money in the utility system to borrow for that purpose.
We also need to be thinking about what Mike Kennedy met with us about years ago in regard to drainage in the city and especially the Randolph Street flooding.
Separate issue, of course, because we, you know, we'd have to have either general funds set aside for stormwater improvements, and we have some minor funding set aside. You recall there's a project up on, what street is it? The Dennis, it's in your neighborhood, I think.
On Lime Kiln, I believe.
Okay, maybe Slime Kiln, up that way, and a few other spot improvements. Or we put in place that stormwater fee concept that the city has that you've already put in place, and we'll be looking at that. It's another hurdle, of course, but it is a funding source to to provide a stormwater utility, which is a very good concept. So but there are needs. You're absolutely right.
Not hearing any other questions from council. As I contacted each of you, I trust you received the email requesting you to complete the review form for the city manager. And as a placeholder in the budget, I would recommend that we ask Jen to add a ten thousand dollar line item. We don't have to use it, but to go ahead and allocate the funds for any potential increase. Four percent's been given to all the other employees and or any adjustment or bonus structure that council may decide. If you decide to do no increase, that is perfectly fine, and the funds will be carried over utilized in some other fashion, but so that we don't have to go back to on a quarterly adjustment, would recommend that we put ten thousand dollars in. And here in objection, will you please? I don't know where that should go, but I'll let you figure that out. Any other questions? Yes, Jim.
Well, Mr. Mayor and City Council, it's not necessary this evening to approve the budget, of course. We, I think, are scheduled for approval on May fifth, but we can't seventh.
Fifth.
Yes, thank you. May fifth, but we could delay that even should you desire to May nineteenth. The there's sort of a that's the last date we could actually approve the budget, because then we have to advertise for a public hearing, first meeting in June to appropriate the budget, the ordinance that appropriate it. So if you choose to act tonight, that's great. If you choose to say, let's take some more time, study it more, ask questions, we do have time. And there's no pressure for you to move forward and do anything tonight. So we're more than happy to say, take another hour, take another half hour. Be sure in your own minds that everything's covered. That's important to you. We've got that time if you if you so desire.
We also probably should keep in mind that General Assembly is aware that the localities need to have their information by May. So hopefully, we'll hear something by the end of April. Optimistic.
Optimism reigns supreme. I would concur with the city manager that perhaps we plan to delay until May nineteenth. We can accelerate if we need to, but it doesn't make sense to me to, we don't have the ingredients, so we shouldn't bake the cake, so to speak. Wait and see if we get, in fact, what we anticipate from the General Assembly. And again, we do have time, so it is on the agenda for discussion and consideration tonight, but we can carry that forward. Unless somebody wants to move ahead.
Would you anticipate if we don't move forward tonight, having a work session next week? I believe we had discussed that.
We do have that, as you said, as on a hold for a work session, and if council would like to do that, we can. If council would like to say, let's do something on May fifth before the meeting, we could do that as well. It doesn't sound like what I'm hearing from you is we need a great deal of time for that. So I guess what I would propose is, you know, if a half hour is required, let's do it on that May fifth meeting. And then hopefully have everything in line for the May nineteenth meeting to adopt.
That would be my preference.
Does anyone have any objection to that? So at this point, we will cancel our our budget meeting planned for next week. Very good. Any other?
Yes. So we did notice a public hearing for me to present the budget tonight. Will we still do that?
Sure, we can do that. Glad to do that. Assuming there's nothing else before council, we will adjourn, and at six forty eight, we will plan to could be in your seats at seven for the regular meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is the appointed hour of seven o'clock and welcome to the April 21st edition of the Lexington City Council. Thank you all for being here. Like to call the meeting to order and the first item of business, if you all will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Before we move on to consideration of the agenda, I'd like to take a point of personal privilege for two items. One, if you're not aware, last week, we lost a civic minded businessman in our community in Bobby Burke Strasser. And his loss will be felt almost as significantly as his contributions to this community. But I would like to invite you all to join me in a moment of silence for Bobby Burke Strasser and his family. Thank you very much. The other item of personal privilege, I'm disappointed that Doug Harwood isn't with us tonight. But for those of you who are not aware, he is celebrating his 30th year of producing the Advocate. So think about all the meetings that he's attended, the phone calls he's received. As elected officials, we think we carry a lot of water, but Doug has been carrying it for 30 years for our community. So when you see him, I hope you'll take the opportunity to thank him for his craft, his wit, and his endurance. Next, as far as consideration of the agenda, had a request to move item 10.1 unfinished business of the DORA consideration. That's the designated outdoor refreshment area consideration after presentation. So between five and six, unless there's an objection.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of 5:30 in our time with the electoral board.
We're new to this room and we had a couple of meetings beforehand. Any luck, Janey? Hopefully you won't have to listen to our 5:30 meeting with the electoral board, stimulating information, but are there any other adjustments? If not, no objection to that change. We will adopt it as presented with that change of the 10.1 between five and six. Very good. Moving on, I would like to invite Jim Jones to the podium where I'd like to present a proclamation. Jim, you've made incredible contributions to our community as a director of the Natural Bridge State Park, and it brings me great joy, along with the members of council, to offer this proclamation recognizing April 22nd through 30th, 2022 is International Dark Sky Week. Whereas Natural Bridge State Park's mission is to ensure the protection of the bridge for the Commonwealth's nature, historic, recreational, scenic, and cultural resources. And whereas the night sky, like forests, wildlife, soils, and water, is a natural resource that we should, that should be protected for future generations to experience and enjoy. And whereas the parks enjoy a nighttime environment that is minimally impacted by light pollution and has exemplary nighttime lightscapes. And whereas the park offers ample opportunities for public observation of our night skies, including supervised activities such as stargazing events put on by local astronomy groups and astronomy and dark sky related interpretive programming throughout the year. And whereas Natural Bridge State Park was designated as Virginia's fifth International Dark Sky Park on April 7, 2021. And whereas Virginia now has the most dark sky destinations east of the Mississippi River. And whereas the International Dark Sky Association designates April 22 through 30 as International Dark Sky Week in recognition of the effects of light pollution on the environment. And whereas Natural Bridge State Park strives to protect all natural resources through good stewardship and environmental education. Now therefore, we, the mayor and Lexington City Council in Lexington, Virginia, formally declare April 22nd through April 30, 2022 as International Dark Sky Week in Lexington, Virginia. And we demonstrate the community support as local government officials to protect the night sky. This proclamation demonstrates our support for Natural Bridge State Park's efforts to obtain Silver Tier Dark Sky Park recognition by the International Dark Sky Association. Be it further resolved, the city of Lexington will support whenever possible, the protection of the night sky of the Natural Bridge State Park and the community in which we serve. Adopted this 21st day of April, 2022. Thank you and welcome you to make a few comments.
Before I, and I'll be considerate of your time, but I would like to introduce you to one of our park interpreters, Brittany Klinger. And I'd like to also say, during this time of being hard to find staff and employees, we're doing one of those things where we're kind of borrowing staff from other places. Brittany also works at Boxer Wood. So what a natural fit between Boxer Wood and the park that it is. But there was one particular story I wanted her to share with you that I really, that really hit home. And I'll let Brittany share that with you.
Thank you. So we, I'll be very brief. We had a dark sky event a few weeks ago, and it looked like it's going to cloud completely over, and we only had four people show up. But the really exciting thing about it was these four people came for this particular event. Two of them were from the Virginia Beach area, and they had looked on the International Dark Sky website and saw that we were having an event and came just for that. They wanted to hit all of the other designated dark sky parks within Virginia. And the other was a mother and daughter who were from the DC area who were just visiting for the day and saw that we were having the event and came. So we were really touched and excited as the Dark Sky Interp team to have people kind of seek us out just for those wonderful events. Thank you.
We've given you a couple handouts there. One of them is a poster about dark sky and how the dark sky affects migratory birds. And the other is a brochure that the team put together about the events and things that are going on for this week and upcoming. You can hit our website. And as Frank always says to me, to make the pitch for you all to join his friends members, some of you already are friends members. And so I encourage the rest of you to consider the same thing because it really does mean a lot to us. Just recently, our friends group purchased a 20 foot by nine foot wagon to be able to use during these dark sky programs to provide better transportation to Jefferson Point to see what's going on. And also having had the time because of COVID and things, so thank you for your support in how you supported the park and with our legislators and the work in getting additional staffing. It was most needed and we are filling the last position, or we fill the last position and that person starts May the, May the 10th as our Chief Ranger Visitor Experience. So we're much grateful for the work and support that you give us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jim. And yes, the pitch is if you are not a friend of the Natural Bridge State Park, shame on you. It's one of the best investments you can make and a great way to spend time. Make great Mother's Day presents, gifts for children and grandchildren, and gives you free passage to the Natural Bridge State Park. So be sure to go online and grab a couple of those. The other item, I'd like to offer a proclamation to an unsung hero who keeps the glue happening and the audio working and all of us informed, and that is our clerk. So on the occasion of the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, I want to recognize Janie Hostetter. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk in the oldest, is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all levels. And whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation and education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, county and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is much appreciated that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, as the mayor of Lexington, I do recognize the week of May 1st through May 7, 2022 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Janie Hostetter, and to all professional clerks for their vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Adopted this 21st day of April, 2022, and encourage you all to stop and express your appreciation to Janie as you have the opportunity to work with her specifically during the week of May 1st through 7th, the special week. Janie, thank you. There's some things that are really fun that the mayor gets to do, and that's, that's one of them with the proclamations. The other is inviting friends. I would like to welcome Eric Wilson to provide us our minute history.
This is the right height. Seems about right. So it's nice to be back. Y'all are taller than you were in the other space. It's nice to be able to share illustrations and images with these again, and also to have a Zoom audience for that. So the tricky thing I'm figuring out is I'm going to have to be looking there, not at you, or I'll be watching you watch there. We're in a hall of mirrors, but we'll figure this out. We are on the eve of Earth Day, so that is part of the prompt here. And some of the things that we'll get to see, also brought in with the dark sky designation, we'll see if we get to the stage at the end or not. But here's a prompt, if you can see this, I won't stick on this. But for everybody to think over the past two years, say, over the COVID scape, can you think of cultural activities that you've attended outside? Now, maybe some of those happened before quarantines and all these kinds of things too, but want to lead us toward the question, what do our natural and historic assets have to offer us in those kinds of cultural activities? So individually on council or the audience, I think we probably all have a few favorites. And a good question to say, why? You know, was it the activity? Was it the setting? And was it the people around us? Advance. So I'm going to show a couple images here. Some of these we may have seen at times last year. So there we are. Go back one there. That was Earth Day a year ago. Going to work, showing up at work, nice shot. And you're looking there right over Richardson Park. Okay, that's where our Juneteenth celebrations will be, about two months. And now if you go to the next one, this is looking the other direction, almost from the same spot, about two blocks away. So now we're looking west. And so the question, I think, is a good question on something like Earth Day. It's not just what do we preserve? Why do we want to preserve things? But where do we direct our attentions? And who do we see ourselves in relationships to? Which neighborhood are you looking from or to? Which direction and where do you want to head? So you can go to the next one, a few maps, earlier maps of the period on the left, if you see that cluster of buildings, that's that same ridge. Okay, so that's looking, it's screwy here, turn around, east. And if I had a cursor, I would, I would trace you on that curvy path. This is old Buena Vista Road and research we did this year actually seems to show that that really curves down on what is now Evergreen Place. That was, that was the route in the swale there. It goes down to Taco Bell. So the way we think, you know, straight east, west, or have these kind of ordinal directions is worth rethinking for things. On the other side, a more familiar 1877 map, I cropped it the way it is because you just see how open the eastern part of town was at that time. So different expectations about what's available, where neighbors are, and where we might move. Could spend a lot of time on maps, but I won't. Could spend a lot of time on maps, but I won't. Here's one just interesting one. I don't know if you've ever seen this, this is an interesting way of seeing the voting jurisdictions for a electoral body. Lexington is nestled there in the middle. North is to the right there. But we don't really see those boundaries on Earth Day, right? When we're thinking about that, if you move to the next one, another way of seeing our sense of place. This was an early Virginia map of 40 years after Rockbridge County and Lexington were established. A hundred years after the first Euro American settlers here. There are no internal divisions of Virginia on this map. It's one of the things I like it. You can see the outline, what was also including Western Virginia. But it's defined there by ridges and water and those sorts of things. The Shenandoah Valley is a defining kind of place that we are very much part of and part of the crossroads. In what, three weeks, May 14th, the Virginia Museum of History and Culture will reopen. They banged it out during COVID and did a complete overhaul of their space. And the Rockbridge Historical Society was one of the consulting teams. And this little tabletop interactive, you can see there sketches out all these different transportation routes. You pick your bicycle, your wooden canoe, your all sorts of things and track through time. And one of the things we really stressed was this idea of crossroads and Lexington and Rockbridge are featured nicely in there. So it's a very place-based, geographically centered kind of exhibit. It'll be fantastic. And just quickly move through these things. I don't know if you've, you've seen that picture before, go back one. This is a cabin on South River. This was taken a year ago, Mary Ann Gilmore's property. And that's the Milky Way there. You could see in that circled little dot, if you want to feel small standing here in Rockbridge County, that's the way to do it. You can continue. Mountain was on fire, some light effects. That was our prompt and I'll close really by just saying these are some of the ways we can use the outdoors, both by looking at the beauty ethically, politically, thinking about our region, our landscapes. You have heard, you've supported the efforts to have the historic school recognized with the state historic marker. And there will be a series of celebrations and a number of you are helping plan. Appreciate that. And finally, on the Friday is Earth Day, Saturday is Shakespeare's birthday. I'm an old English teacher. That seems to happen every year on the 22nd and 23rd, and it's a neat conjunction, particularly for a playwright who had a few things to say about nature. But in this area, it's a good reminder of how much, not just Shakespeare, but other arts get performed outdoors. We have a pretty rich tradition here. So you all, some of you had kids performing in those, that space or were there. Go ahead. There you go, Dawn and Larry, Jill Walken somewhere up there in there, using Hopkins Green, a civic space as a stage. That balance here in Lexington of a classical backdrop and a natural, natural setting. SVU did great inventive work last year, again, creating that balance of a classical and natural escape. Seems to make sense in our community. How can we keep funding models? And the last couple up to Blackfriars Theater, they're back in play too. It is one of the world's treasures, as is the Globe Theater. But they, go to the last one, have an open roof to the sky. Again, finding ways to connect people, arts, beautiful timberwork, by the way, among other things, can be one of the assets we support and promote. So that's it. We'll have those up there. I'll embed some little YouTube clips of the reading of Shakespeare, but we'll spare you that for tonight. Thank you for your time, your support of the arts, nature and civic development.
Eric, thank you for being with us and keeping us mindful of the, the beauty around us and to pause and enjoy the arts as well as our natural beauty that we have in our community. So thank you for keep, keeping us up to speed and look forward to more. And thank you also for the plug for Juneteenth. June 19th will be a Sunday and we'll be celebrating it, Limer Downey and Richardson Park. Next item on our agenda is the designated outdoor recreation area. I'd like to call in city manager to introduce this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did, of course, go over this in some detail at our last meeting with the Chief of Police.
Jim, I'm going to ask you to pull that a little bit closer so people can hear you.
Well, thank you.
Can everybody hear okay?
Okay, my apologies, little, little new. Anyway, at last meeting, you did hear from the Chief of Police and our Director of Main Street Lexington about the possibility of approval of a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA. And after a lot of research by city staff and the Main Street Lexington staff, working with the Virginia Alcohol Beverage Commission, I do believe that this, along with Main Street Lexington staff, believe that this is something that has a lot of potential for the city. And based on what I've seen, and I believe you've seen, we've shared with you. This is something I think that I recommend council act on immediately and adopt this. And basically adoption would mean allowing us to apply for a permit. You'd authorize me as your representative to be the representative. They have to do a background check and license check. Somebody just has to step forward and do that. I guess that would be me. I will probably pass, I believe, so it's probably a safe bet to use me. The cost of the permit is just over $500. It's not very significant, of course. Again, you saw the outline of the district that was submitted by Main Street Lexington. At no time at this juncture do we believe the entire district would be used, but that would be a potential. In most cases, just segments of the district would be used for particular events such as, you know, the Art Fridays on Washington Street, maybe nearby Hopkins Green, downtown Main Street and Nelson Street for the community festival, et cetera. We would designate certain areas of that district for certain events. Of course, council would approve each of those events or we would not then hold them. In many cases, Main Street Lexington, in fact, most cases would probably be the applicant. But in some cases, of course, another organization could apply to use part of the district for an outdoor recreation or refreshment area. So that's basically what I have. I do recommend again that we go ahead and submit the application and approve myself as city manager to apply to the ABC for it. I don't know if our Main Street Lexington director wants to make any comments. I see her back there in the audience.
Did members of council have any questions? Mr. Smith?
Other organizations that might be applying for using this permit, do we have any criteria set up for who would qualify and who would not qualify?
We have not, I don't believe, put any criteria in place of that nature. I, you know, basically this is a case by case scenario as I see it. Rebecca?
Yes. We are going to use the Freedom Food Festival as our first trial, which is July 3rd. And then once we have gotten through that, we, I have agreed to sit down with the Chair of the community festival. They're interested in using that, so we would like to sit down with them after the Freedom Food Festival and just go over all the details, how we did it. And if there were any things that we could improve, then we could speak to them about that. But there's not really a lot of organizations that are interested in using this so far.
I'm just thinking about the ones that haven't thought about it yet and then think it's a good idea. And what, what qualifies me as, or whoever as a, as a applying successfully for using that permit and who is not successful. Where, where's, if you've, I'm not asking for what that criteria is now, of course. I'm just curious if that process is in place. So when we, if get the license, there is a process by which another organization can apply and feel confident that they will qualify.
Well, I can't speak to whether they would feel confident they'd qualify. Clearly they work with city staff, primarily the police department because a safety plan has to be put in place for each event. I would confer with the Main Street Lexington to be sure that they felt it was an appropriate event downtown. And then again, you would approve it. We'd bring a recommendation to you jointly and say yes or, or no. I can't speculate as to what specific organizations or particulars about what they might be asking for would occur in the future. It would be a process of review culminating with going before city council.
I'd like to add one more thing too, and that is every event that is going to be using this license must also submit an entire safety plan and probably boundaries to our ABC agent. So they have to also approve every event in advance, even though we, assuming that you vote on it, even though we would have the license, every event has to be put forward to our ABC folks for approval.
Other questions? Or consideration?
I recommend that city council approve the submission of a request for a designated outdoor refreshment area license and authorize the city manager to complete all documents necessary for this purpose.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shawn, Ms. Alexander. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank everyone. I know it was a large team who, who worked through this process. I mean, Main Street, the police department, city staff, and even some of our downtown restaurant owners all participated to.
Yeah, they were all pulled.
Yes.
And nobody said no.
Right. And I heard from a couple of them that we better do this. This will be good for everybody. So I'm glad we're, hopefully we'll move them forward with this.
Excellent. Thank you. And would just give a shout out to George Uji, who was a driving force behind it. And of course, the Freedom Food Festival. So good work that he does in our community. There's no further discussion. I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith? Mr. Ayers?
I.
Mr. Alligood?
I.
Mr. Ziegler?
I.
Ms. Shawn?
I.
Ms. Alexander?
I.
A motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And look, look forward to the first event to the Freedom Food Festival. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, review and consideration of the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. And I'll call in city manager for an introduction to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, of course, has been over much of the detail of the budget already on your, in your two work sessions. Of course, we always annually have a public hearing or several public hearings on the budget. Council at some point in time does then adopt the budget. Also adopts an appropriation ordinance in typically in June. And I just want to go over some of the broad strokes now for the public here, although you've seen this information. The total city budget is going to be about $34,439,000. Of that budget, $20,186,000 is general fund. $4,849,000 of that is transferred out of the general fund primarily to the school fund. The utility, the school fund is $8,527,000. Utility fund, water and sewers, $5,728,000. We are proposing $4,845,000 in capital investment, which includes water and sewer utility investment, equipment replacement and other capital projects. So that is the total of our budget, 344,439,000. Of course, we have a broad basis of fiscal policies and financial policies in place to manage the budget throughout the year. And I would note that as you well aware, there are a number of guiding principles or highlights as to how we put the budget in place. And these have been set by city council. And of course, some of them are, don't need explanation, but I will note that we have to fund our debt service. We always do that first and foremost. We fundate, we fund mandated programs, of course, as well. There are a number of those programs from the state level primarily, some federal mandates that we provide those services and we provide that, those programs. We typically maintain a fund balance that's adequate in accordance with good fiscal policy. And we have much more fund balance than we need in general fund, but that's just to our advantage. We provide appropriate employee compensation. We fund and preserve employee benefits. We maintain facilities and infrastructure. A key component of what we do in our community, making sure our facilities, whether they're our streets, our, our buildings, public works, underground parks, et cetera, as well maintained as we can afford. And then provide excellent core services and provide quality customer service. I'll just pause for a minute there because you did hear provide appropriate employee compensation, fund and preserve employee benefits and provide quality customer service. The key to those in all of what we do are our employees. And as you know, from your work sessions, we are proposing a substantial increase to employee compensation based primarily on the compensation study that we just had conducted. But also knowing that in this environment today, in order to maintain our competitiveness, we have to annually look at an appropriate increase for our staff. And with inflation occurring as it is today, we have recommended 4% in the budget for staff as an annual cost of living adjustment. We've also put in place and recommend some bumps, if you will, for longevity. Some of our staff members may not receive as much of an increased compensation based on our adjustments, based on the compensation survey. But for those people who have significant years or making it the top of the range, they would receive instead a bonus based on their longevity. Try and reward everyone who contributes to the success we have here in the community. As a percentage of our budget, I'll note that the general fund is about 45%. The school fund is 25%. Our water and sewer fund is about 17%. And our, excuse me, our capital projects are about 11%. We then have some smaller amounts for equipment replacement and et cetera. Use of funds in the general fund, public safety is 27%. That's primarily, I shouldn't say primarily, it's almost exclusively police and fire. Public works is 19%. We all know what comes under public works, again, streets, sidewalks, facilities, management, parks, a plethora of things that we see in our everyday life, refuse pickup, et cetera. To other funds, 21% is provided from the general fund to the schools. General government administration is about 9%. Debt service is 11%. And then we have some smaller things like health, education, welfare, 5%, community development, 4%, judicial and leisure each at 2%. So we focus on those core services and core infrastructure that we provide to the community. We don't do a lot extra. We do some things like leisure services, but they're really small amounts of our, of our budget in general. I won't go any, go over any of the school fund or utility fund information. Again, equipment replacement fund, which we try and fund every year is for our key equipment items that are aging out of our fleet. And we're budgeting about $567,000 for that. There's some police department vehicles, fire department vehicles, public works, department vehicles and equipment. And I will cease right there on the budget itself. In general, we have some information about capital improvements. Unless there's a particular questions at this time, I'll just pause and you can break into the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Our course of action for public hearings are an introduction from staff typically. And then next is the actual public hearing. And then we'll have council discussion and potential consideration. I don't anticipate the council is going to consider this budget tonight because we heard a few things. And we're also waiting for our friends in Richmond to conclude their negotiations so that we know exactly what the ingredients will be for our budget. But with that, I would like to open the public hearing for this item, which is fiscal year 23 budget. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to this topic? Seeing no one jumping out of their seats, I will close the public hearing at 7:35 and ask if there's any council discussion or comments. One piece that I think is noteworthy, this budget does not contain any tax increase. And at our current structure, one penny on the real estate equates to 58,000 approximately. So just keep in mind, when we talk about raises that we're looking to put in place and increasing $550,000 in expenses due to raises for our employees, what that would look like on the tax rate, but we're able to do it with no tax increase at this point. what that would look like on the tax rate, but we're able to do it with no tax increase at this point. So proud of the work that this council has done and staff has led us through to get to this budget and encourage you to take time and look at the details of this budget because where you spend your money certainly speaks to the fabric of your community and our public works do a great job of keeping the water flowing, the trash picked up and the snow removed. So thank you for that, for that work.
I just want to clarify that we'll continue to have opportunities for public comment or a public hearing at each of our successive meetings until we approve the budget, right? We we're not leaving this public hearing open. We'll just have another one or two over the next few meetings.
I will say probably our our budget work session for next week is canceled. I'm not sure we'll advertise for a public here on the fifth, but there will be on the nineteenth when we plan to take this back up. But people are welcome to come anytime and under public comment, address our budget. Or as council members have reminded folks, we're available by email or in the store or anywhere around town. So contact us. We'd love to hear your insights and answer any questions you may have. A lot of times we may refer you to staff because they they know that the excruciating detail of each line item. So with that, I'd like to move on to item six point two and continue the public hearing in consideration of a recommendation to select a developer or partner to develop the Spotswood site. I do want to recognize for those who were not here at our last meeting, we did have a public hearing. We continued that public hearing until tonight, and I do anticipate that we will close the public hearing later after everyone's had an opportunity to speak, and the council will consider it. There was a rumor or question out there as to whether or not if you spoke at the last meeting, if you could speak again. I would say you most certainly are welcome if you have new information to help us discern the outcome or the best way to vote. And I have a few people that have signed up to speak. If you didn't sign up, we will have an opportunity for you. But I'll ask the city manager for introduction to the topic, a brief one, and then we'll move on to the public hearing.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe it needs a lot of introduction, but I did want to share a little information that tangentially is is perhaps important to this. City council, of course, and the community has been spending a significant amount of time on this issue since really January of two thousand and twenty one. And to represent the investment the city council has made, I had the city clerk take a look at the number of meetings and opportunities the public had to participate in this topic in the last sixteen months. And there were actually seventeen council meetings or other meetings held where the public could participate, hear about this proposal, hear about the development of the Spotswood site. And that doesn't include the six meetings that were also tangentially again about Rara using part of that site. So over that sixteen month period, you held twenty three different meetings or activities where the public could learn about what was being proposed, how council was preparing to proceed. And then what obviously occurred, whether it was the purchase of the Givano building by the Rara Group or et cetera. So it's been something that's been, I think council should be pleased, and I hope the community is also pleased that there's been opportunity to comment, discuss, and become very educated about the decisions you're making, the things that you're considering for the Spotswood site. So I just wanted to share that that you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to open or continue the public hearing, and the first speaker signed up is Beverly Tucker. And as she makes her way to the podium, Larry Weiss, you are on deck. Beverly, if you will, please state your name and address for the record, and please pull that microphone down so everyone can be sure to hear the words you have.
Give me the word, the signal, if you can hear me.
Yes, ma'am.
Beverly Tucker, eight, seven, two infield road Lexington.
And let me stop you for just a second. We anticipate or ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. So we'll begin the clock once you begin speaking.
Okay.
Thank you.
As past president of Historic Lexington Foundation, I fully support the organization's endorsement of Spotswood Collaborative. Their plan is sympathetic to the site as well as the nearby neighbors. HLF has devoted much energy and resources to the Oak Grove Cemetery, including restoration of many of the historic grave sites. To look across the street to a large boxy structure and parking area as envisioned by Echelon is not in keeping with our desire to preserve the presentation of our history. The Spotswood Collaborative Plan is true to the ideals of that commitment and was designed by professionals who understand this value. Jobs and resources created by the Spotswood Group would stay in this area. If the criteria for decision is dollars, consider not compromising the integrity of what Lexington has worked hard to maintain. Remember those who lie at the foot of the land in question, those who set the standard for us to follow, and to our longstanding desire to preserve and respect the new unique story and traditions of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. And you're right about the work of HLF and our community. They do great work, especially in the cemetery. Larry, please come on up. If you also will state your name and address for the record, please.
Everybody's a little shorter than I am. Larry Weiss, nine mile court Lexington. Mayor Friedman, members of the city council. My name is Larry Weiss, and I'm honored to serve as president of the Historic Lexington Foundation. As you know, HLF, like others, is concerned about the planned development on Spotswood Drive. To summarize previous comments made by Elizabeth Betch on behalf of HLF, we are concerned about the size and scope of any potential development, preferring a plan that both respects the look and feel of our community and works within the contours of the land. Lexington is a special place, and places like Lexington don't simply remain special. They require stewardship, care and commitment. Like city council, HLF has strived to be one of those good stewards. Tough choices and looming capital needs face our city, and we recognize the imperative to grow our tax base to meet these ends. We also very much appreciate you as leaders in the community agreeing to do this important work and make these decisions. So thank you. On behalf of HLF, I'm asking three things. First, we would encourage city council to take one more hard look at the Spotswood Collaborative proposal. We hesitate to pick winners and losers in a situation like this, but we simply prefer prefer their proposal. The detail they have submitted thus far answers our concerns. We acknowledge that it may not be perfect, but we know this group is willing to modify its proposal to meet any of your concerns as well as the needs and concerns of others. In addition to accountability from you and from the planning commission, these folks are our friends and neighbors and will face accountability from us in the community, at the grocery store, at local restaurants and at church. Please consider the Spotswood Collaborative one more time before making a final decision. Second, it is our understanding that there has been some communication between the two developers and that some consideration of a partnership may may be in the offing. A collaboration between the two would possibly address any deficiencies in each proposal and offer the best solution possible. Please consider granting a little more time and perhaps meeting with them to find out how this might work and determine if a partnership or collaboration is possible. Taking a little extra time on the front end may well net a much better final result. Third, and finally, while emphasizing our preference for the local developer, if city council chooses Echelon, we ask that you take the extra step of asking for a detailed development plan before selecting that firm for the project. Knowing in advance that Echelon can offer a plan that both respects the character and feel of Lexington, addresses concerns from the community while meeting its own economic requirements, will ease this process in many minds. Thank you again for listening to our concerns, and thank you again for your service for volunteering to make these tough decisions.
Thank you, Larry. And thank you for your insights and the council will take every bit of that into consideration. Next on the list is David and Mary Ellen Folsen. Unless I'm telling the okay. Very good. Thank you for being here. Next is Moria Schweitzer. And as Moria makes her way, have Max Ivan cough on deck. Welcome, Moria.
Thank you. I'm Moria Schweitzer, and I live at seven twenty four A Plunkett Street in Lexington. I am recently back from three years in Florida, so I've missed a lot of council meetings, but I'm glad to be home. I do own rental units just off of Preston Street, so I do have a vested interest in what happens in in on Spotswood. I have two concerns that I would like to address. The first is in the list of criteria that was distributed to the developers, the the six points. There was a statement that the city preferred apartments based in part on the two thousand nineteen Dantor study. I looked up that study. I'm a retired librarian. I have way too much time on my hands. And it seems to me that that was for the V dot site, and a lot of it had to do with some senior housing. My concern is that it addresses a need for apartments when there is, I think, a crying need for both apartments and homes that or or units that can be purchased by individuals. And the reason for that is in part anecdotal. I, as I said, I have I have four rental units in Lexington. I have not had to advertise them in the last ten years because rentals are so tight that they just get handed off word of mouth to a friend. But at the same time, I have recently asked my tenants in my own home that I'm planning to move into if they would move out this summer instead of next. And they did. They bought the house two doors down from me. It went into a bidding war and went for ten percent over ask because the sales market is so tight. We need both. And something like condos as opposed to apartments would give you that. If you look in the town, if you look at Pike's Place, Fordens Commons, White Street, they're all condos or townhomes, and they're about fifty percent investor and fifty percent owner occupied. So if we had condos at Spotswood instead of apartments, I think it would be a better mix for the city. My second point is I was at the last council meeting and I was not happy with the report. Thirty seconds. Okay, anybody want to speed you some time? Here's my problem. I've been an educator for twenty years. The report said that there was a scale of one to five on six criteria, which are listed on this. There was no discussion of the relative merits of those six criteria or how these in the two developers scored. Instead, we got three pages of references for Echelon when references were not one of the six criteria. That to me shows some bias on the count on part of the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Moria. Max.
Attendance as well, but nevertheless, I came somewhat. I had a few thoughts that I jogged down on the way between dropping off my two year old and actually trying to make this movie tonight. And first of all, dear Mayor Friedman and city council counselors, Alexander, Alligood, Ayers, Ziegler, Chuck Smith and Ms. Strong. I stand here before tonight, not as a member of the Spotswood Collaborative, but as a Lexington resident, a registered Lexington voter, a commercial and residential property owner in the city, a taxpayer, and finally, a young, arguably youngish professional working in this city. We all realize council's desire to develop this city owned asset and as and as as communities support the most balanced, sensitive and scaled development proposal. It does not take much time after evaluating both options to determine that only one of the presented proposals meets those requirements. It's been said that the city manager believes that the collaborative lacks technical skills or financial backing to execute the project like this one successfully. However, these are the same people who have been successfully developing and building in this town for over thirty years. Their work can be can be seen every day on your way to work. Their designs and creations became an integral part of this town's appearance and its historic and architectural heritage. Flexibility of their proposal further indicates their forward thinking compared to vaguely defined square vision as showcased by Echelon. Both proposals address immediate housing goals, but only one group is willing to address affordability and accessibility in their approach while still maintaining balance and grace in their design while being sensitive to long term legacy and its impact on the very nature of our historic Lexington. The fact that so many people I hear in front of you tonight further underscores communities' understanding of the issue and concerns associated with choosing the option that will strike right right at the core of this beautiful place we call home. I urge you to step back from the brink of making a legacy defining mistake and listen to your constituents who made their voices clear here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Max. So that was the last person that had signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic this evening? Moria, come on down. We'll we'll give you a few more.
I am not trying to say in what I said before that there was any kind of corruption or backroom deals or anything. But the process on the surface did not, to me, appear to be fair. If I, as an educator, had done had had created that kind of report for a student competition, there would have been angry parents in the principal's office. The last thing I'd like to say is whatever gets put there and whoever puts it there, both the process and the product need to be something that the citizens of Lexington can be proud of. Because one thing I do know for a fact, it will be smack dab in the middle of the view shed of one hundred percent of the citizens of Lexington who line up to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Moria. And it sounds like you're having fun in retirement. Well, welcome home. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Nick? Come on up, and if you will, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Betts, two twenty one Massey Street. And I thought the point, the point about both the rental and the now ownership market being tight in the city is is well taken, and I think that should be considered in terms of, you know, what is built. Condos do give the option for both ownership as well as rental. And, you know, I thought that was a was a good point.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Is that Shannon behind the mask? Excellent. Welcome. If you could, please state your name and address for the record, please.
And Shannon Spencer. Five twelve Taylor Street. So my family is just moving back to Lexington after being away for a long time. And and we are on Taylor Street, which is right down the street from this development, the future development. And I just wanted to make note of how that, you know, you're driving by there every every day and having a big apartment building that seems completely out of scale to the rest of the buildings around, I think would be jarring, but also sort of it has that, you know, it's getting away from the historic Lexington feel and the Spotswood Collaborative plans that I've seen really get more towards that feel and and human scale. When you're walking down the street, you're not looking at a huge apartment building that's sort of like, where did this come from? So I just would like you to to please really consider the Spotswoods Collaborative as as the option. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. And welcome home. Probably fun, but also alarming when your high school classmates are sitting on city council and things of that nature. So is there anyone else who would like to speak to this topic this evening? Hearing none. It's seven fifty five, and I would like to close the public hearing and ask for council's discussion and consideration. Hearing none. It's 7:55 and I would like to close the public hearing and ask for council's discussion and consideration.
Sorry, a couple of questions for Jim. There was mention of a partnership. Where does that stand?
I was not privy to that conversation or involved in it, but I did speak with both of the principals. And my last conversation with both of them seemed to indicate that that potential has been, I won't say abandoned, but it doesn't seem to be going anywhere at this point. Probably two days ago when I spoke with both of them, it just seemed like that was just not going to work out at that time. And both agreed that they had great conversation, exchange of information, but it didn't seem to be going forward. There may have been some conversations since then that I'm unaware of, but, you know, my direct conversation at that time indicated that that it was not happening.
Okay, just to make that clear since it was brought up. And it was an interesting possibility, but we know where that stands. And then can you explain the process? At this point, we are picking a developer. And then the next step is to work with that developer to come up with a plan and give them time to look at the property if you want to fill us in.
Yes, that is correct. The real issue here was which developer would be most adept at being able to develop the site and provide to city council and the community the the product that city council wanted to have here in the community would benefit most from. So it had nothing to do with the actual vision of what was on that site at some point in time with either developer or any developer. Both the planning commission and city council will have the ability to view plans that have been specifically proposed at that time for the site and put restrictions in place or put conditions in place as to what types of residential structures are there. Could be single-family home, as was discussed, apartments, condominiums, et cetera. And also what some of the criteria are for the the visual or aesthetic effects of the construction of the site, parking, landscaping, et cetera. Those things can be negotiated with the specific developer chosen in the future before construction starts or agreement is in place.
And I'll just make a comment that I agree with the people who made the statement that we need both houses and apartments. We do need both. This is a two parcel lot. It seems to be better suited to having apartments here. We know we have large demand for that transitional type housing. It really is not intended for for people to live there long term, but for new people moving into the area so they can get settled and fall in love with Lexington like everyone else has. We need that. We're hearing that from lots of employers that we need transitional housing in Lexington. We don't have a lot of that. We are fortunate. We do have another five acre parcel and we don't know how that's going to be developed. And that's the V dot property. If you're not familiar with that, it is next to Maury River Middle School and that will be another project, but perhaps that could be developed for housing that we have other options, things to consider, but I think as a as a council, and I will speak for myself specifically, I feel like this two acre lot is well suited for that type of transitional housing.
And just a point of clarification, we don't own V dot yet.
Right, that good point.
The documents are not signed and the check has not been delivered, but we anticipate to be imminent, right, city attorney? Thank you.
Ms. Schweitzer mentioned rightfully that we both need both condominiums and apartments in our community. Like Ms. Strawn, I believe that 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 2.2 acres is is better suited for apartments. I think that's what we desperately need there. I said that three weeks ago at our last city council meeting. I've said that consistently for the last year and a half since we've been discussing this. And so my decision on this really comes down to who would best manage and own an apartment development. And unfortunately, and I even explained that to one of the Spotswood Collaborative members three weeks ago and said, I hope that I could hear how that might work with the Spotswood Collaborative. But I never got that answer. And so I truly feel that if we if we believe that apartments are the best use of that property, that Echelon is the best developer for that. That doesn't mean that Echelon is a better developer than Max Ivankov and the Spotswood Collaborative. It just means for apartments of that size and scope that Echelon would be better. Now, if we were talking about townhomes on the potential ownership of the V dot property, that would be a very different question because looking at townhomes, I I could, I would certainly want to vote for the home team. I want to vote for the home team here. Unfortunately, I don't think that's in the best interest of the city. So right now, my vote is still for the Echelon group. That's where I stand on this.
Thank you, Dennis. We can continue on with discussion or if that could be a motion. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but. Mr. Smith?
As Mr. Wees pointed out, we do have some tough choices ahead of us and there will be a winner and a loser. I don't like using those terms, so I'll use your words instead of mine. And I would agree with 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 Dennis that I would I would also prefer to use a local group. It 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 strengthens the 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 bond between the folks that work here and 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 part of our community and the and the and the folks that have to make the tough choices that are ahead of us. I've been doing this now for 12 years. I've had to make popular choices involving what flags we will allow or not allow on on our flagpoles, a dam that is a financial burden, but a a wonderful recreational asset. A hundred-year-old elementary school that was falling apart that we had to spend a little more money on than we had anticipated. The the process of the public participating in those decisions I value greatly. It helps me think more clearly and see more clearly about what is in front of us and what we need to do. Last, I guess, was that way, that way cemetery. That's not even a really a financial matter, but really stirred up a lot of passion and emotion. And it's the passion and emotion that that tends to cloud the issue when I, as a councilperson, need to make a difficult decision. Why do I think half of us, probably a personality disorder, sitting up here taking abuse from folks that we call our neighbors and friends? Abuse is a harsh word, but disagreement, how about that? That's a better better term. And in the end, I realized that I'm doing what I'm doing so that Lexington is a better place when I leave than when I got here. So as I make that decision, I want you all to know that's why I'm making. You may not agree with it one way or the other, but please understand why I'm doing what I'm doing.
Thank you, Chuck. Other members of council. Welcome. Comments or?
I'm pretty comfortable. I mean, I spoke at our last meeting and like we've talked about, we've been discussing this topic for a year and a half. I've been pretty laser focused on having apartments on this parcel, much like Dennis mentioned. I've been open to other things. I'm always open to everything that's brought before council. That's our job. And I try to keep an open mind about everything. I don't have, I don't get rich off of any decision that I make on city council. I missed my nine-year-old's first hit tonight at a softball game to be sitting here, you know, but that's the sacrifice that we all make and we are happy to do it. There's nothing else that we would rather be doing. But our job right now is from day one on this project is to choose a developer, not a proposal, but a developer, not a site plan, but a developer. And when I weigh the credentials and the previous projects of the potential developers and then I weigh the city manager's recommendation, I have to continue to, I'll repeat what I said last meeting. Echelon Resources has done similar projects before. Spotswood Collaborative has not done similar projects before. We would probably, you know, I I am reluctant to use any analogies, you know, but the fact of the matter is if you're building a school, you might not hire a residential builder to build a school. You might go out and find other builders who have built schools before to build you a school. This is a very similar situation. Our goal is to develop with apartments. We've got wonderful people of part of the Spotswood Collaborative with incredible resumes. But I have not seen from what they put forward when they answered the, you know, the questionnaire and and put forward their their credentials as developers of apartments that they've done that before. And so I I'm going to continue to lean towards the city manager's recommendation that that I support Echelon Resources as as who I would choose as our developer. And there will be many more steps along the way to talk about the site plan, to talk about what goes, the size and scope of that project on two acres. The planning commission, city council, city staff. There's lots of opportunities to to for the public to weigh in. And I know the public will because our public is locked in and engaged in our in our decisions. So that's that's kind of where I am right now, same place I was a few weeks ago and pretty much the same place I've been consistently through this process.
Thank you, David.
This process has been a long one and it's done one of these all along the way. And it causes one to change perspective, causes one to change decisions that you thought that were enmeshed in your head and over time that does change. When you start hearing about the various uses, whether it's condos, single-family apartments, you talk about the market and who's who who in the market is attracted to one or the other. You talk about the product, the size and the scope, the aesthetics, all of those things. However, selecting a developer now and then thinking about the concepts and negotiating those things more so later requires a different perspective. Making a decision and choosing whatever you're doing on who you know is easy. Who you trust is easy. Whose work speaks for itself in our community. That's an easy decision. But my decision tonight is very difficult because of those things that I felt very close to. And my leanings have always tended to be those of of local users, hands down. And but as we look at experience in the more in a more so commercial sense of development, my leanings from a strictly business perspective give me cause to vote for Echelon and I hope that when I say that, that I won't be sorry.
My two cents. When I first saw the proposals from the two groups, to me, it was night and day. And what appealed to me about the proposals that I saw was that the Spotswood Collaborative proposals I thought were the best looking fit for that property. Low roof lines, more green space, not a monolithic structure and a parking lot. Those are the types of things that got my attention. And and the the building of a an apartment building originally was proposed for 150 units. And that would have been a serious five-story. There were there were two buildings proposed in there and it was the sum of 150 units, I think, is the way it was. And so over time, the rah rah question got resolved. The amount of the property was reduced. The scale of the number of units was changed and reduced. And now both proposals are in the neighborhood of 50 units. They're they're both the same. To my eyes, I still prefer the look of the Spotswood Collaborative. The concern that I have is the manage, and I'm in favor, I agree with my fellow council members that what we need is apartments and not separate. And I could go condos, but what we need are those transitional units in the city to do that. We only have one choice on this property. It's been said. And, you know, making the right choice is what we're talking about and you never really know how things turn out in the long term. And so you try your best and whatnot. I'm in favor of the Spotswood Collaborative, but I don't think they've been in the business of doing what we're proposing to do and manage rental units. I think that down the road with the V dot property where there's a mixed-use question that hasn't been resolved yet is probably a better, a better place. But I would have to support the Echelon selection, but not the monolithic structure. And hopefully that will result in green space and a much more pleasing construction project that fits that area for Lexington.
I'm going to chime in with a couple of observations as well in hopes it'll be followed by some type of motion. How did we get here is the the question that I found myself pondering over the past couple of weeks. I'm not a historian and this is not a comprehensive history by any stretch. However, some of the details regarding our path to tonight's consideration. On April 1, 1949, the Lexington Presbyterian Church deemed the city or the town at the time as being the proper caretaker of the Stonewall Jackson at that time or at that time, city cemetery, town cemetery. The the city council members served as trustees of the cemetery. On November 5 of 1969, the estate of Ada McCoy sold a 50-foot lot and 5.8 acres at fair market value to the cemetery. The payment was made actually by the city with the intention to add a portion of the existing to the existing cemetery and plans for other development, including what we call Spotswood today. On October 10, 1986, the at the time, current city council deemed it necessary to transfer the title from the cemetery to the city to facilitate future development of this land. W. O. Roberts, the father of Trent Roberts, our fire marshal, was responsible for that deed and what's recorded in the courthouse. And all of those details and greater detail is included in the memo from the city attorney dated April 13, 2021. Sometime during the course of 2007-ish, I think it was, John Ellis said, at the direction of city council sent a letter or we had a vote designating and acknowledging that there was the intent to develop that property. In 2012, as Chuck indicated at a previous meeting, there was a failed RFP where the city took in offers but neglected to have the super majority and chose not to sell the property. On October 1 of 2014, city council announced the hiring of Noah Simon as our new city manager. City council at the time charged him with seeking developers, both local and from out of state to partner for planned purchase of V dot. We hoped one day to purchase it and we still do. He took developers that and folks that I believe were involved, that are involved with the collaborative as well as people from out of town on tours of the city to see different ideas and locations for potential development. During the tour of Kendall, Edwin Gaskin with Echelon identified the city water tower as a potential development. And that's how he first became involved with Lexington and interested in working here. And that's how he first became involved with Lexington and interested in working here. As, as been mentioned before, rah rah and the community table. That utilized the Piovano building, they had been advised back in 2014, 15, 16. That they should be looking for a new location because it was the intention of city council to develop this property. Since January of 21st of 2021, as the city manager indicated, there have been 24 different public meetings about this topic. January 21st of 2021, city council made the public aware of their intentions to sell the Spotswood property to Echelon for development of apartments. At the time rah rah had announced that they were interested in buying their property. City council pivoted, worked with the community, worked with rah rah and rah rah now is the proud owner, occupier and steward of the Piovano building. The city. Looked or after the sale of the Piovano building, we invited folks to offer submissions for the property. And before us tonight, we have two terrific offers from the Spotswood Collaborative and Echelon. And of course, staff has recommended Echelon. Have to tell you that personally, I'm extremely proud of this council, the commitment they make to each and every person in our community and specifically our city. The time, the consideration and the thoughtful work that they do in their engagement and leadership. Leading to tonight and every first and third Thursday that city council meets. And I'll conclude my comments with that and my appreciation for council and their work and would ask for council's consideration.
I move to partner with Echelon Resources to develop the Spotswood site.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Smith. Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Allagood.
Hi.
Ms. Strawn.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
The motion carries unanimously. As was mentioned before, what we have done tonight is selected a developer. The next stage of this will be to work towards what will actually be built there and the specs associated with that. And I have every confidence in this council, as well as our planning commission, that they will take into consideration the things that you mentioned that they already believe in. What a beautiful city we have, the necessity for embracing our historical heritage. And the historical architecture and view shed. And as one neighbor downstream said, waste or runoff of this site as it gets developed. So these are all things that council will be working on in the weeks and months ahead. So thank you, council. Next item on the agenda. Is consideration of our minutes. Yeah, the April 7th. Work session and regular meeting. On your, in your packet. Are there any corrections or additions or changes? Hearing none, we will approve those as presented. The next item is citizens' remarks and comments. And as folks depart, thank you all for being here. Don't forget to thank Doug for his years of service. And would ask if there's, I didn't see anyone that signed up, but is there anyone who would like to speak to council on other items not on the agenda? Hearing none. Well, close the citizens' remarks and comments and move on to reports and commissions. Ask for Mr. Smith to report on the Blue Ridge Resource Authority.
Director Dudley presented the board with a draft budget for consideration. Operating budgets, a little over $2.7 million. We have put in no increase in tipping fees. So that'll help the city maintain its level. Solid waste. Process. I would anticipate we will adopt the budget at our next meeting. And, and at that meeting, we'll also have a public hearing on the tipping fee rates for, for landfill. Any questions?
Not a question, but of note in the budget, as has been talked about before. In this budget, if I recall, there is a stipend for the board members that's to be part of the budget.
Correct.
$100 a meeting.
Correct. So that will be an additional $84, $100 a year for sitting board members. The intent behind that is to encourage, once we roll. When the authority was set up, the board was, was comprised of five representatives from the county. And two representatives from the city. When it was set up, those were the five supervisors and two representatives from council, myself and, and the mayor. The intent, long-term being to roll those roles of authority, board members to the general public. In order to provide a little incentive to make that happen. The stipend was included in this budget, had been discussed in the past, but had not been budgeted for. This time we had time to figure out a way to work it into the budget that we'll be having coming up this year. There was, at least at our last meeting, when it was presented, no objection. And I have not heard any objections yet from any other board members. But I would encourage any and all that are concerned about our landfill budget to attend our next authority board meeting.
Will that stipend take effect when the elected representatives cycle off? Or will the supervisors and the council members already get that now?
It, it will start with the July.
And does the, do the meetings currently occur during board supervisor meetings? Not, it's not a separate meeting that they have to attend, they're already here.
The authority board meetings happen after the county supervisor meetings. We do have one county citizen representative on, on the authority. After the resignation of supervisor Lewis. So we have a representative actually from way north county that drives. For a piece to, to get down here to, to attend.
That's helpful to know. I mean, that's because that's the purpose of the stipend to attract those citizens.
And that was part of the incentives. We really need to do, take consider, serious consideration to get this in place.
Was there any consideration to make an exception if you're on the city council or board of supervisors that you do not get the stipend? I like the idea of trying to encourage citizens to participate on those boards, on that board in particular. Cause I think there's a lot of expertise in the community that could help us.
It, it was not presented or discussed, that option, no.
Thanks for that report, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strong.
Main Street Lexington submitted a Rock Ridge Community Health Foundation grant request for $25,000 per year for the next five years. If successful, the grant funds will be used to establish programs for people to engage in our community in new ways that promote physical and mental wellbeing. This will be accomplished through a downtown wayfinding map and linkages program that has access through a QR code. And the grant would also support numerous free and family-friendly events we host. And speaking of free and family-friendly events, the spring sidewalk sale is this weekend, Friday through Sunday. So join us downtown to shop and show your support for our local businesses. And remember, Rock the Bridge will return on Saturday, June 11th. And that's all I have.
Many of you will probably lose sleep worrying about the sidewalk sale tomorrow.
Anticipation.
Exactly. Always a fun time and it looks like mother nature is going to cooperate. No, no snow or ice tomorrow. What a long month this week. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
Planning Commission met on Thursday, April 14th and a public hearing was held for the Washington and Lee master plan. The hearing will continue at the May 12th meeting. Our next meeting on April 28th at 5 o'clock PM in the community meeting room of city hall. Will, there will be a public hearing on Washington and Lee's application for a conditional use permit to allow the former Beta House to be used as offices. And that's all I have.
Hmm, I think I grimaced at that item last time. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Yeah, the board did not hold a regular meeting this month and won't meet again until Wednesday, May 18th. So a very short report tonight, but I did want to mention that round three of regional tourism's sponsorship grant program is underway. And 10,000, roughly $10,000 has been allocated for this round. And ground, grant applications are being considered for requests of up to $3,000 from organizers planning events that take place from July 1st through December 31st of this year. Interested parties should visit lexingtonvirginia.com/sponsorships to view the guidelines and fill out an application. And the deadline for applications is May 1. And that's all I have. If anybody's any questions.
Thank you, Dennis. Rah ro, Mr. Ziegler.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
No report.
Excellent. Morey Service Authority.
Next meeting is the first week of May, it's May 3rd, Tuesday in this room. And other than that, no other report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. For my report. The, in no particular order. I was contacted by a county resident who farms out infield road. And you may recall, the bridge has been reduced in weight that it can handle at Limekill thereby BMEF barbecue. And I made the city manager aware of the concern. Seven tons apparently is not a whole lot and there's concern as to delivery trucks for Kendall and other professionals that may be working. Violating that. So wanted to keep an eye on that and keep it posted. I wanted to give yet again, another thank you to the good people of Diamond Hill, the residents there. If you don't have a child to deliver to the middle school, you're missing out on potholes and blocked streets and all kinds of fun. The, the crew is doing a great job, but the replacing water and sewer lines is a messy business. So thank you to the, the Diamond Hill community. Also wanted to congratulate Jess Reed, who on Monday was in Boston and competed very successfully in the Boston Marathon. I can't remember exactly where she placed, but I think it was sub eight minute miles that she averaged, which is very impressive. So the, the Lexington Running Shop was well represented in Boston on Monday. On Monday evening, I, I braved the rugged roads of ice and snow with Jay Lewis and Chris Slayden. And we attended the Central Shandau Planning District Commission meeting. And you may remember the name Hamilton Lumbarde, who's a native of Bath County. He works for Welding Cooper and he gave us a presentation on understanding the 2020 census data. There were certain terms like schizophrenic, like never before, descriptions of some of the amassing of information. But he gave some great perspective. And if you all would like to schedule a work session and have him talk about our local area and the impact that it can have, would welcome that. Making that invitation for you. But the planning commission also approved several items on our agenda. But the piece, just as a reminder, I think we talked about it before. Habitat was a successful applicant for a housing grant. That's going to allow them, I think, to complete eight houses that were not scheduled. But probably within the next 12 to 18 months. So congratulate Habitat and Lynn and her team, Lynn Johnson, for the, the great job and applying for that and implementing that grant. And lastly, if you're not aware and have no plans to, on the 22nd of April, Liburn Downing Middle School Family Fun Night. So I think I have the date right. Tomorrow night? Yeah, tomorrow night. So bring, bring your sofa cash and come and have a good time tossing rings and cakewalk and all, all good things, middle schoolish. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Feed the Need Foundation, a local foundation, has asked us about placing a lending library in Jordan's Point Park. And they initially thought it could go well, the Miller's House Museum attracts some attention to the museum. And some of the folks who go into the park would see it there and perhaps grab a book and go out and read in peace in the park. I did approach the Miller's House Museum Foundation, or I should say committee, and they were not opposed to that. But the Miller's House Museum itself has a very difficult grade around that structure. So looking across the street where the parking, there's just a nice, nice flat spot. Talking about, of course, a typical lending library, they would decorate it with the natural scenes though of, of the park and, and. Nature, if you will. So very soon you'll probably see about a four foot, 40 foot, excuse me, 40 foot, 40 inch box there of two by two. So people can pick up a box as they go in and out of the park, a book, I should say, in and out of the park or take it and take it home with them as a lending library does function. So you'll see that soon, I believe. Juneteenth Day Celebration, as was mentioned earlier by Mr. Wilson, the committee planning that has been working very hard. It will be on Sunday, June 19th from approximately noon to seven o'clock in the evening at Richardson Park. And some of the facilities for the middle school will be available to the folks having that celebration. And based on what I've seen from the planning, there will be music, entertainment programs, presentations, activities, food and fun for all. So keep that in mind as you plan for that June weekend. The Miller's House Museum recently was able to upgrade their IT. And of course, that provides for better access to the museum resources. And the systems that the museum operates there. So they were very pleased to be able to have that resource made available to them. They've been working on for some time. DPW activities, as we all know, Jeff Martone is gone. Our assistant director, Scott Damron, is taking the lead managing that department. He's also being assisted by Thomas Wagner, Doug Sisson and Stephanie Tomlin. And they've done a great job picking up the duties that Jeff had and parceling those out and keeping everything moving smoothly to date. Columbia Gas, working in the city for months, will now be repaving the poorly done patch on Nelson Street from Sheets to Still Street. And that will happen this Saturday at 8:00 AM. And after that, they will also be repaving the streets where they worked in that area, including Spotswood and Lewis Streets. What they're talking about is approximately an eight foot lane. So it wouldn't be just a three or four foot patch of the trench they'd made, but they smoothed out about an eight foot lane in those locations. And they have, you know, indicated that we would receive a product that we'd be very happy with. So we'll be watching that. As the mayor noted, we have some other streets in town that are in rough shape right now, East Washington Street being one of those. It is also scheduled for some temporary resurfacing this coming Monday. Now, we all know or should know that there's also going to be some sewer line replacement on Washington Street itself. So when that occurs, we'll be tearing up that paving, but it is in such a shape that it does require some, some temporary paving at this point. It's pretty rough. And as the mayor noted, Diamond Hill is some places just as rough. Staff and I are very pleased with the patience of the folks on Diamond Hill. It is a tough. Tough thing to be experiencing on a daily basis, in and out of your home, to the school, to wherever you're going. I, you know, I do see it on a daily basis on Washington Street at city hall. There's some tough stretches of that road. I will say however, that 42% of the project is now complete. We are looking at some delays, however, in finding manholes. They're being delayed about a month. They're just not readily available initially with the project. There was no problems and now they're just tough to come up with. The project is scheduled to go until October. And at that point in time, we will be repaving all of those streets in that area. In one of our budget sessions, I think last week, we discussed the $300,000 that was in the budget. And we did not note at the time that there were some other state street funds available. So I think it's about a $560,000 amount that we have available to pave streets. If there's any excess in, in that budget, we'll then go to elsewhere. But we are looking at primarily the Diamond Hill area, all the streets involved in this project. Providence Hill is being relined as we speak as well. About 33% of that project is complete. A number of the sewers there have been relined. A significant number of the manholes have been rebuilt and relined because there was infiltration in the manholes themselves. A pedestrian bump out is going to be installed on Jackson Avenue near West Side Drive. This will include a raised extension of the sidewalk that will protrude several feet to Jackson Avenue. And the sidewalk will be ramped on both sides for better pedestrian safety and improved, improved pedestrian movement. Something that's been studied for some time and public works will be doing that work with a contractor in the very near future. In the fire department, number of activities, as always is the case in the fire department. The staff itself, again, received training from Columbia Gas about underground pipelines and did a mock tabletop disaster drill. The department, along with the police department, participated in evacuation drills at both city schools. They responded to a cabin fire on Sandstone Lane, but unfortunately the cabin was completely engulfed and was a total loss. They responded to a call for a. They responded to a call for a ring stuck on a resident's finger. I didn't realize we did that type of thing, but they cut it off, the ring, that is. Department staff were also busy with our children, with children on the Easter egg roll in Brubaker Field. And they had a public education outreach with the children who were there. This past Monday, after the unusual sleet and snow, this storm, the department responded to 17 calls for service, which is double what they usually receive on any given day. So clearly some people did have some difficulties with the weather. They also responded to a pickup fire on I-81 and a lawnmower fire on Thornhill Road, and both vehicles were a total loss. Department personnel are still supporting the COVID prevention efforts. And Lieutenant Trent Roberts participated in a vaccination event at Richardson Park recently. In the police department, Chief Green is regularly participating in and chairing the regional Virginia Alcohol Safety Program. The board met last week. Members of the department have regularly been having members of the chief's advisory board ride along during their patrols to become more familiar with the activities of the department. And you as council members are welcome, as is any citizen, to call up the department and ride along with an officer all night long or for just a few hours. If that's something you would like to see and do, just to become again, familiar with the department does on a regular basis. Deputy Chief Fitzgerald is representing the department and participating in training as the new CAD, that is the Computer Aided Dispatch System and Police Records Management System is being implemented. And that's a very important system over at the 911 Center for both law enforcement and fire and safety and other emergency responders in our community. And it is going well at this point in time. Lieutenant Frost and our accreditation manager Fisher administered written and physical agility tests for the two new recruits in the department. And as you recall, they are attending the police academy now from January until the end of June. After that period, they will then do two to three months of patrol with an officer accompanying them before they are then on patrol by themselves. But they are being tested constantly for agility and other skills that are required to be a police officer in our community. Deputy Chiefs Fitzgerald and Lieutenant Frost have met with consultant from Project Horizon in an effort to improve response to sexual assaults in the community. And that is the end of my report. Other than I wanted to direct you, if you have the opportunity to look at an article that was just placed in the VMI newsletter about three cadets that volunteer as EMTs in the Lexington Fire Department. Three fantastic young men and women who spend time after their hectic VMI schedule and ruling activities in our fire department. Who are very thrilled to be there and also very pleased about the support they get from our professional firefighters. So I think that speaks a great deal toward the good work and the professionalism of our firefighters and the leadership of our fire chief, that these individuals will come and volunteer their time at a young age and are so committed. I've got a paper copy. I can make copies of it, but it's also online if you look for it there. That's the end of my report.
Just had a question. The, I'm all for making library books readily available to everybody. I'm just wondering, is the Feed the Need, is that the group who put out the lending libraries at other locations throughout the city?
No, that I don't know as a matter of fact.
Okay, because I think it was Kendall related, but.
This is a group, Feed the Need also is doing food distribution in places in the county that aren't served by Raro. They're doing a sort of last mile type circumstance. And I can't remember if you mentioned or not, but the actual units to hold the libraries are going to be constructed out of steel by students with buyers technical. And then have some special attractive marketing or stuff on it, highly technical marketing term. I'll have to consult with Dr. Strong. But it, it, it's a neat collaboration with that and so.
And as long as they have a plan to maintain the libraries. I know that was a concern last go around, but.
That was why they wanted to go with the steel fabricated, so that they, they'll be there a long time.
And just putting books in, you know, making sure that there are books.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Another item that we would be glad to know that our police department offers. One of my neighbors accidentally locked her dog in her car and was unable herself to open her car for whatever reason. And, and seeing her on the hood of her car, calming her dog through the front window. And ultimately having a police officer arrive to open the car door, dog was happy. And the owner was happy, but our police department won the day again.
Terrific. Folks do a great job in our community, to be sure. Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned it briefly earlier, the VDOT property is still not closed. I know I've been saying hopefully the next meeting for about six meetings now. But the attorney general that we've been, or assistant attorney general that we've been working with in Richmond said that he's got it to the last person who needs to sign it. The assistant attorney general was going to be out all this week. So he and I are both hoping that this last signature will be put on sometime this week. And I'll check in with him early next week when he's back. And hopefully by the next council meeting, that will all be signed, sealed and delivered.
The proverbial check is in the mail.
Two weeks at a time.
Thank you. Any questions for the city attorney?
How's that opioid money coming?
We actually, a quick update on that was they finalized, they're putting the sort of the meat on the bones of these funding mechanisms that they've sort of set up. And they believe the money will start flowing to localities by the middle of May for this latest, the Jansen and distributor settlement. And then there are additional settlements that are pushing in. The, the Sackler family, they've raised their offer by, I think, a million, a billion and a half dollars to settle their case. So we'll see if that's enough to, to get that settled. But, but progress, both money flowing in and progress towards more funds flowing ultimately into the bucket that comes to us is in the works.
Thank you very much, Jared. Next item on the agenda is new business, a request for a second round of INI remediation funding. I'll call on the city manager to see how fast it takes us to spend a million bucks.
It may not take long to allocate it, but spending it will take a few months because it takes time to do this kind of work. But we have been discussing the INI into our sanitary sewers for some matter of months. We know there are financial implications, both in regard to what we pay the MSA to process or handle rainwater and groundwater that gets into our pipes, costs we could avoid. There is also costs to the MSA when they start looking at improving the plants and equalization basin to handle that very heavy flow that comes in during the rain events that we've seen from time to time. And of course, you wisely begun to look at those areas because of our past city manager, past finance director, setting aside funds for both something like relining. Total replacement in the areas of Diamond Hill, Jackson Street Avenue, et cetera. All of those lines need to be addressed if we're to financially reduce the cost, our operational cost. Repair is also a significant cost to those existing lines that when they break on a monthly or weekly basis, we're digging up holes in the ground or in the streets and that costs money. With, if we were to reline these pipes that are still structurally sound, we can do it at a fraction of the cost. We're not going in there five or 10 years from now and digging out the entire sewer line through roads, through people's yards and replacing those lines. Relining, as a matter of fact, given the latest data we've seen, information will seem to increase the lifespan of those pipes by about 60 to 80 years. As again, as opposed to waiting 10 or 20 years from now and completely replacing those, some other council, some other city manager. So as we're aware, we're working on Providence Hill now. What we've put aside is not adequate in that Sarah's Run drainage to completely cover or finish that area. Jeff Martone has done some work on that. What I'd like to recommend and propose to city council, since we have the contractor in there working now, he's familiar with us, city staff, familiar with that area. That we go ahead and allow another $1 million to be spent, which would then complete everything in that Sarah's Run watershed, South Main Street, Sarah's Run Interceptor, so that that interceptor has the capacity for future development on South Main Street. The reason we have not been able to really move forward, other than the fact we don't own the VDOT property is that there's not capacity to handle significant redevelopment there because of the infiltration. The pipe itself will handle normal, average, dry weather flow. It just won't handle the significant wet weather events. But with the additional million dollars, we can go ahead and completely line the portion of Providence Hill that contributes to the Sarah's Run Interceptor. We will then also then move across to the other side of Providence Hill on the Woods Creek Interceptor side. Jeff, again, has looked at those areas that are priorities. Some of those would include the golf course area where we've had some significant issues in the past. We don't want to dig up the golf course. We just assume line those pipes if we could, among other, again, priorities in that area. Would not finish the full Woods Creek watershed of Providence Hill, but we'd get, you know, get close, if you will. We do have, as I mentioned in our previous work session, significant excess unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Initially, my proposal was to take a million dollars from that general fund fund balance and invest it in the community. We get just about nothing now for interest on any invested funds we have. There's an immediate return on our investment if we reline those sewer lines. And again, we avoid future costs that are very significant. We avoid operational costs of replacing those lines or fixing those breaks in the future that occur throughout the city. At least in that area, we reduce those costs. Looking at, as we talked earlier in the work session this evening at our ARPA funds, it occurred that a better use of the ARPA funds today was for something like relining those pipes in the Providence Hill area. The, the money's there. We have to allocate it for a specific need. As opposed to waiting a year and a half from now where we're up against the limit for allocating those funds. Let's allocate it today out of the ARPA funds. That leaves those general funds dollars that I originally said, let's take it from there for other purposes. And there will be other purposes, whether it's MSA, the jail, work on the high school. Those other projects will come in the years to come and there'll be another million dollars in the general fund to perhaps address those projects when needed. So at this point in time, again, I'd like to ask that city council allocate another $1 million. Initially, I noted that out of the general fund, there were several reasons why I would ask we take that money. One is it does provide, if you will, economic development for the entire community. Specifically, of course, in this case, in the South Main Street area. But also because we couldn't continue to borrow money from the utility fund and keep our rates where we'd like to have them. We are going to have to borrow money in the very near future, but if we were to do this, it'd be one area where we could sort of plug that hole and not have to use or borrow money for the utilities funds we could use those general fund dollars. Of course, using ARPA funds would accomplish the same purpose. It just wouldn't be from the general fund. So that is my recommendation is to take ARPA funds, $1 million, allocate it today to more relining in the Providence Hill area and get that money put to work for the community as quickly as possible. I'll take any questions you have.
Thanks, Jim. Ms. Strahlegood.
The million dollars for relining to basically put in shape that, that sewer line that services the VDOT property means recollecting now from council meetings over a year ago. We were looking at $2.5 million to fix that sewer line to make that property, the VDOT property, that at one report didn't need that sewer line. And then it became known that that was false, that we did need to fix that sewer line because of this INI problem that basically filled up the line whenever it rained. So you couldn't add any extra capacity to the line for building apartments. We were talking about apartments at the time. So it sounds like a really good deal to spend a million dollars instead of two and a half million dollars to do this. So I'm in favor. And I think most people would be. So I would like to offer a motion to appropriate for INI purposes, the additional million dollars of that ARPA money.
Thank you, sir.
For these INI repair.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions for the city manager? Mr. Smith.
Other than, I think it's worth pointing out that the INI problem that we do have, in addition to economic development or advancement and growth. And when we do have, there was a significant rain event, if I recall correctly, that nearly overwhelmed the wastewater treatment plant due solely to, to INI. And that's something we don't want. And in addition, I think our wastewater overages are running three, $300,000, $500,000 a year due to INI. I don't know how much this allocation of a million dollars is going to prove bringing that number down. But it's, it's, it's well worth, well worth the expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this opportunity forward. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith. Mr. Ziegler. Hi, Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. I'm not aware of any other business to come before. But I would like to give an update. Family Fun Night is not tomorrow night. It is the 29th. A week from tomorrow. Just feels like it's already the 29th.
Dark Sky Night is tomorrow night at Natural Bridge State Park at 8:00 PM.
Correct.
And sidewalk sale during the day.
Lots of good things going on in a sleepy little town with nothing going on. April 29th, 6:00 to 8:30 at Liburn Downing for Family Fun Night.
Frank, I'm pretty sure you had it confused with the PTA Talent Show at Waddell Elementary School tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. Because I'll be at the Talent Show tomorrow and Family Fun Night on the 29th.
Excellent. Excellent. Again, lots of opportunities for fun, fun activities. We will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much for your work this evening and don't have to worry about breaking down the room. We are adjourned.